Good morning, I'll call to order the June 2nd.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Here.
Commissioner Atkins?
Here.
Commissioner Holberg?
Here.
Commissioner Workman?
Here.
Commissioner Egan?
Here.
Commissioner Slavik?
Here.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Here.
Thank you. You know, good morning. Before we begin our meeting, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge what has occurred in our county, in the Twin Cities, and far beyond Minnesota over the past week. So many of us have experienced a mix of raw emotions, anger, pain, fear, and hope. Following the senseless death of George Floyd while in Minneapolis police custody, the peaceful protests that followed, and then the rioting, damage to our communities, and threats to public safety have gripped us for days. This is a difficult time for us in our own lives, and it is challenging us as a county. Employees are hurting. We've experienced damage to county property, and our residents have been affected by actions we've taken to keep the public safe. Last Friday, I approved a countywide curfew after consulting with Sheriff Leslie and county staff in order to protect lives and secure property. We deeply appreciate the willingness to comply with the order and your understanding when we extended it one night at the request of law enforcement from across the county. And we're grateful for the round of, around the clock work and protection of the sheriff's office, city police departments, and others. There's no playbook on how to respond to what has transpired in recent days, but with their collaboration and quick response, we've been able to help keep our communities safe. I'm hopeful that the worst of the civil unrest is behind us, and now we can begin to focus again on our mission to serve the public while also commenting as an or, while also committing as an organization to help to heal the wounds exposed in recent days. Thank you. And now I'd like to go and, please join me in the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. At this point, we will go out into the audience. I know we do have one person who is here for one of our regular agenda items, but if, if not, the public has had an option to join this meeting and speak. Anyone wishing to address County Board on an item not on the agenda or on the consent agenda may also send comments to countyadmin@co.dakota.mn.us. And I'll ask the clerk if there have been any other comments that have not been forwarded to the board thus far.
Chair Slavik, there have not been additional comments besides the information that was sent in last week's board meeting for the item that got moved to today's meeting. And you guys were all sent the documents via email, and they will also be posted to the website.
Okay, well, thank you very much on that. So seeing no further comments from the audience with the exception of Mr. Anderson, who will speak on 11.1, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. And I would like to make note that, given that we do have a a member of the public who'd like to speak on 11.1, I'd like to move that to the very first item of the regular agenda. So instead of, we would make that the very first regular agenda item, and then have the 10.1 begin after that. So if they're, if that's willing, someone's willing to accept that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by, Egan is our second?
Second by Commissioner Gaylord.
Second by Commissioner Gaylord. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
Thank you. The agenda has been approved. We will now move on to the consent agenda, which is the minutes from May 19th, 2020, and items 6.1 through 9.5. Are there any additions, corrections for the consent agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Gaylord.
It's been moved by Commissioner Gaylord. Is there a second?
Holberg, seconds.
A second by Commissioner Holberg. Seeing or hearing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlach?
Yes.
And Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the regular agenda, starting with now 11.1, which would be the Transportation Resission of Resolution Number 93-481, Award of Bid and Authorization to Execute a Contract with Hoffman Construction Company for County Project 70-23 in the City of Lakeville, and amend the transportation, sales, and use tax program benefits. And just to make you aware that I will, that the presenter will be Jake Rezak, Assistant Design Engineer. And we do have, after the presentation, we do have some comments from Mr. Jerry Anderson with Midstate Company. So I will start by passing it on to Transportation Staff, and then after that to the public comment.
Thank, thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name's Jake Rezak, and today I will be talking about the County State Aid Highway 70 Expansion Project in the City of Lakeville, which is County Project 7023. Next slide, please. Today, I'll briefly discuss the project's scope and also talk about the intersection of Cassas 70 and Hamburg Avenue, which is currently an all-way stop. And we'll also, also talk about the bidding and funding of the project, as well as the requested actions that we're requesting today. And then at the end, we'll, we'll take any questions or comments that you or, or members of the public may have. Next slide, please. County Project 7023 is on County State Aid Highway 70 or Cassas 70 in the City of Lakeville. The project goes from Kenrick Avenue on the west to Cedar Avenue on the east. This project is proposing to expand Cassas 70 to a four-lane highway, replace signals, construct trails, and improve drainage along the highway. And we're also proposing a noise wall to be constructed between Dodd Boulevard and Humboldt Court. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the current Cassas 70 and Hamburg Avenue intersection. Today, there's, there's one lane in each direction. There's right and left turn lanes on, on each of those legs of Cassas 70, and right turn lanes on Hamburg Avenue. There are stop signs at each leg of the intersection, which stops traffic on Cassas 70 and traffic on Hamburg Avenue as well. Next slide, please. This always stop has been in place since 1993, when Resolution Number 93-481 was approved by the County Board. As part of the, we completed a traffic study, which was based on current volumes, modern standards, and it's fairly typical of what we do on our projects. That traffic study concluded that an always stop was impractical due to the delay that it imposed on, on Cassas 70, and, and also because of the difficulty with, with traffic managing multiple lanes or multiple through lanes on Cassas 70 as well with an always stop. We also looked at a potential signal at this intersection, given that it had higher volumes than, than the streets adjacent to it, such as Highview Avenue. The proposed intersection met no signal warrants and actually needed about a 55% increase in traffic to meet a, a, a volume warrant that we, that we looked at. So in, in the end, the study recommended a conversion back to a two-way stop based on the four-lane configuration. Next slide, please. County and city staff also met with local business on May 29th to discuss some concerns that, that were submitted. This was in addition to the, the public outreach and the public meetings that we've held for the project. The specific concerns voiced at that meeting was mainly pertaining to...
Mainly pertaining to truck access and the length of time that it would take for a truck to make a left turn. There were some responses that we shared. We did have a similar scenario at Lexington Avenue and Gemini in Eagan. We've had others in this, we've had others similar scenarios as well. And more often than not, we do get adequate gaps when we do go to a four-lane configuration. And county staff made sure to identify safety as the top priority. We do have some issues with signals as far as crashes are concerned. So it was definitely something where we viewed safety as, you know, we looked at this intersection with respect to safety as, as the top priority, and are recommending this mainly because of safety for all traffic that uses the intersection. Having said that, the county and city are committed, and we did commit to monitoring this intersection upon completion. And if there are issues that were not anticipated, we would look at other, other measures that we could take to address any safety concerns that, that do pop up. Next slide, please. This is what we are proposing for the intersection of Hamburg Avenue and County Road 70 once construction is complete. As you can see, there are two lanes of traffic in each direction now, right and left turn lanes on County Road 70 and Hamburg Avenue. We did make a little, little bit of a change with the north leg compared to the south leg, but then we also have the two stop signs that would only be on Hamburg Avenue. It should be mentioned that when we did design this intersection, we did so understanding that there is a concern for a, for the removal of the four-way stop and a potential signal. We did design this intersection to more easily accommodate a signal in the future. If it does ever warrant one, we, we acquired sufficient right-of-way to accommodate the signal and also set up the legs of Hamburg in a manner that would best, that would best accommodate a signal if it is warranted. Next slide, please. The design of the project was completed in April and advertised on April 10th. We opened bids in May. We opened 10 of them. The bids ranged from about 28 million up to all the way up to 36 and a half million dollars. And we did get a pretty good variety of bid, of bidders in those 10 bids. Quite a few larger bidders, some local ones as well. Ames is always a fairly large bidder when it comes to these projects. And Eureka is very local to the project. The low bid, however, was by Hoffman Construction Company out of Wisconsin for $27.95 million. Next slide, please. The engineer's estimate on this project was, was on the order of $22.7 million. So quite a bit below what, what the low bid was. With this project, it did have federal funding and had to adhere, and the estimate had to adhere to MINDOT and federal highway thresholds. The funding application, which is what the estimate needed to closely resemble, did not assume a noise wall, nor did it assume access roads or the, the amount of city utilities that we ended up including in the project. Had we provided the estimate that was substantially higher, we would have had to request an amendment to the federal highways, to the program for federal highways, which would have delayed, which would have likely have delayed our bidding on this project. Having said that, we did use estimates from previous projects as the basis for our bids, namely County Project 5019, which is a similar project in Lakeville that was completed in 2018. So we did, we did have a basis for this estimate. Given the, the current environment, however, it did appear that there were some, that there was, that there was some volatility in bidding, and some of the items that we thought might be lower definitely did come in higher than anticipated. Next slide, please. The Sales and Use Tax Program budget did include additional funding to account for a potentially higher bid and some of the items that were not assumed at the time that the funding application was, was submitted, such as the noise wall and such as the access roads. So we do have about $29 million in total project funds, which includes the $14 million in federal funds. The, the low bid, again, was, was 20, was 27.95 million. We did, we do have $190,000 that we're requesting to include for potential pavement incentives, which is, which is in accordance with the MINDOT standard specifications book. The contractor is entitled to pavement incentives for constructing quality pavements. It's, it's a method that we use on almost, on almost every project to ensure that the pavements are good quality. Including the, the bid and the incentives, along with all the expenses from design and right-of-way, we're looking at a total expenditure at this point of $31.8 million, which is almost $2.5 million short of what we have for the budget. So we are requesting an amendment to the budget of $2,446,000, 240, $2,446,510. And the city is supportive of the county's recommendation to award this project to Hoffman Construction. Next slide, please. So with that, there, there is a resolution before you today with, with three items. The first is to rescind Resolution Number 93-481 and, and convert the Hamburg Avenue Cassas 70 intersection back to a two-way stop. The second is to award the bid to Hoffman Construction Company for County Project 7023. And the final item, and the final action requested is to amend the transportation, sales, and use tax budget. Next slide, please. So with that, I would stand for any questions that you might have.
All right. Thank you. I think what we will do is, before we have any questions, I think we will go to Mr. Jerry Anderson, who has been waiting for a couple of weeks now to share some comments. And I understand the board has received the petition from a number of the businesses along County Road 70, but we'll certainly give Mr. Anderson up to five minutes to share what he'd like to say. So, Mr. Anderson, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning to the, to the board and, and the team there. Thanks for the opportunity to talk. I've certainly been interested in leaning in on this for, for quite some time. Went to most of the informational meetings, been meeting with the county and city staff as much as possible and, and trying to get involved and lean in on this topic. We were awfully surprised to learn that we were losing the controlled westbound access that our industrial park has to get out of the area and head out to the freeway. This industrial park has benefited the city and county for quite some time. And, and that access, westbound access is quite vital for our products and goods and equipment and staff that, that, that work here. So it's our belief that, that the neighborhood desperately needs that controlled westbound access. There's a very high density of truck traffic with this neighborhood. The safety of the motoring public is our top priority. We're especially concerned about the amount of time that a, a typical truck takes to get up to speed, the amount of gap that is needed amongst virtually all of the lanes to get across that intersection. Concerned about the limited access that will be in place at Granada and Welcome Avenue, pushing more traffic over to Hamburg and Highview. So it's, it's the belief of the, we've got 26 businesses here I'm representing today that, that it's going to put our, our, you know, trucks, our, our company trucks by all these businesses and our, our vendors and suppliers and, and customers in some cases in, in a position to take chances and make decisions to split those gaps and, and get our, get out on the road safely. It's our belief that that's, that's not doing our neighborhood justice. And so we've submitted a petition for working with the county to come up with some controlled westbound access. And that, you know, we're, we're open to options there. It could be at Hamburg or Highview or at the new intersection at 220th and Cedar. But one way or the other, we really believe we need controlled access to prevent more injuries and damages to our equipment and, and vehicles. I think that pretty well summarizes it without, without going into more depth of the, all the businesses here affected. You know, I, I think that's a pretty good summary for the time allotted here.
Well, thank you very much for your comments, and they are appreciated, Mr. Anderson. So, and I understand that you and a group of businesses had, had some conversations and met with, with some of the county and city staff, and maybe Commissioner Holberg, you might, were you part of that as well?
Yes, thank you, Chair Slavik. We had an opportunity to have an online meeting, I believe it was last week. And I know that the staff took a second and third look at this intersection, also modeled the truck traffic. When I look at the 55% increase in volume, I don't think that's the only issue that the county wants to monitor, knowing the complement of cars and trucks that will likely be in that area. Quite clearly, clearly, the safety is the number one concern for the county as well. And we had some discussion around when you put in a signalized intersection that's not warranted, some of the consequences that concur and occur as a result of that. And I don't know if the presentation was a little light on what additional measures were explored for that particular intersection, given the concerns expressed. And maybe Mr. Krezbacher, I don't know if Christie's on, but they did take a look. And I think we, of course, also, I believe when they say current traffic volumes, I think that it was pre-COVID volumes as well that they used. So I think if we could have just a little more information on how they took a second and third look at this intersection, and then what the intent is for monitoring the safety in that intersection and timeline for making any adjustments if necessary.
And I don't know if there's someone in Transportation who wants to take that?
Mr. Chair, I could address that. This is Mark Krezbacher, the Transportation Director and County Engineer. And we did have an extensive conversation with Mr. Anderson on Friday and talked through this. And as Commissioner Holberg mentioned, staff has looked at this intersection in a lot of detail, and particularly given the amount of truck traffic that we're dealing with. We wanted to make sure we're interested in the intersection, or we're recommending the safest and best option for mobility. And like Mr. Anderson mentioned, and Commissioner Holberg as well, that this really comes down to a safety that's our top priority. And as the members of the board are aware, we consistently see issues with safety at, at traffic signals, crash rates that are typically about twice as high as side street stop locations. And that's at locations where signals are expected and warranted. So given that safety record and the lack of volume here that warrants a traffic signal, as Mr. Rezak mentioned, we, we don't meet any signal warrants. There's a pretty substantial increase in traffic that's needed to get to that amount, even in consideration of the trucks. And even for the typical eight-hour warrant, which we use as kind of the benchmark, we only see two hours out of the day where we exceed the lines that we would need. So pre-COVID traffic, it was a long way away from those volumes, even in consideration of the trucks. We've regionally seen a 30 to 40% decrease in traffic with COVID. Those implications probably aren't as significant here, given the volume of trucks and the business traffic that's going on. But were we to come to the intersection today, we, we think we'd be even further away from the need for a signal. In, in the petition, it's referenced that the current intersection has had some safety issues. That's true. We've had some pretty significant compliance issues out at that four-way stop, largely because it's at a location where there's not enough traffic to require management. And that's in the current two-lane condition. By adding the additional through lanes, we're creating a significant amount of additional gap. And we've seen in those situations, even where we have a lot of truck traffic, that the intersections perform very safely, and we actually see increased levels of mobility due to unneeded delays during the non-peak hours. Mr. Rezak mentioned another intersection up in Eagan, the Lexington Avenue and Gemini location. Some of the commissioners, Commissioner Egan in particular, might recall the discussions with the U.S. Post Office about that location, very similar to the concerns that are being expressed today and through the resolutions, with a very heavy volume of truck traffic, making a left turn onto Lexington to find their way to Lone Oak and then onto the freeway. That location actually has a significantly higher volume of truck traffic and about a 40% higher amount of traffic on Lexington Avenue with the same design, and that intersection has been operating safely and efficiently now for about 10 years since we installed the side street stop and no traffic signal. So we're, we're very confident that the side street stop is the safest and most efficient operation. We expect that we'd see better mobility than the current four-way stop, and certainly a safer intersection than the current configuration or a traffic signal, at least based on historical analysis and data that we have for similar locations. Excuse me. As we just discussed Friday, though, we are committed to monitoring this intersection. We, we don't want to incur any safety or mobility delays anymore than our businesses or other users of the intersection. There are a number of ways that we can review this to make sure it is working as well as it can. And as we mentioned, in the event that we see mobility or safety issues that we're not expecting, we can then look at the actual traffic volumes at that time, address the specific issues that might be occurring, and make sure whatever changes we make are directly related to the exact situation that we're dealing with. So we, we're recommending to continue monitoring this. We, we don't see any basis for additional traffic control at this time. But in the event that becomes necessary, we will look at the changes that are needed, work with the city, the businesses, just like we always do, and move forward with any necessary traffic control changes. We, we talked Friday about the timeline for that, and depending on what needed to be done, it could be a matter of months and potentially, you know, less than a year in most cases. We do have money set aside in our budget for those types of quick turnaround issues if they're needed. So there would not be a significant delay if there was a need to do something. So there would not be a significant delay if there was a need to do something differently. And I, I don't know, Commissioner Holberg, uh, Mr. Chair, if that addressed your, addressed your comments or questions, but. I'd pause in case there are any further questions at this time.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, Commissioner Holberg, the floor is still gonna be yours if you have any questions. Otherwise, I'll go to other commissioners.
Um, I believe Mr. Anderson has unmuted, so if it's. If it pleases the Chair, if he has additional comments. I would, uh. Appreciate the opportunity for him to lay in if there's something else that we need to address.
Certainly, Mr. Anderson, was there something else?
Uh, no, I didn't know the protocol for muting there, I guess, but, uh. Well, I, uh, just in, in rehearing those comments again, um. I've, uh. I strongly still believe this is a, a loss to the neighborhood. To, to not, uh, have a controlled westbound access and, uh, without looking at any other options. I don't see any, you know, shortage of stoplights in going on Cedar Avenue. And, uh, there's no problem in coordinating those. So. Why there's such a priority for keeping east and westbound traffic flowing on seventy. I, I think that's the beautiful part about a stoplight is. If nobody's at Hamburg Avenue, then seventy can keep flowing. But this is gonna put a tremendous burden on our drivers where in today's, uh, climate where. Uh, where electronic logs, uh, every minute matters and. It's gonna put those drivers in a position where they are forced to make a decision and, and find or make a gap. And take chances and this is gonna. Result in accidents and, and, uh, the burden is gonna fall on our insurance companies to. Clean up these messes. So I'm. Hoping there's some other alternative that we can come up with.
Well, thank you again. Was that final for you, Commissioner Holberg? I think a few other commissioners have some questions.
Um, I just, uh. Really appreciate the participation of, uh, Mr. Anderson and bringing, uh, this issue to our attention. The staff is highly aware, the city's highly aware of the concerns. I think that, uh, the commitment to monitoring this, uh, I would not at this point. Move to make any changes. I think that. The experience in other areas, I know there was a neighborhood on. Uh, Highway fifty that was really concerned and. The, it is true that when you get those extra lanes, there is a lot more gapping. It just, it happens and. The modeling, um, if it's not correct, uh, I believe that everybody's committed. To move as rapidly as possible, uh, to put, uh, signals there, but to. Have signals where they're not warranted can also be a safety issue that we have to be concerned with.
Alright, thank you, Commissioner Holberg. Um, are there other commissioners who have things it looks like? Commissioner Egan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, you know, I wanna state right off the bat that I'm very sympathetic to Mr. Anderson and, uh, I'm. Looking at this and trying to be as thoughtful as I can and I appreciate his concerns. But I'm also very grateful that, uh, Mark Kresbacher raised the issue of the, the, the. Previous issue that we had dealt with on Gemini and Lexington. Back in, in the days that Mark is referring to, I chaired the, uh, Post Office Relocation Committee. The St. Paul Post Office was relocating from. St. Paul to Eagan, right across the street, literally from Gemini. And I was, uh, I had met multiple, multiple meetings with the Post Office, uh, requesting that, that a. Signal be installed at, uh, their entrance off of Lexington Avenue. And Mark can address this better than I can, but I know the county did a study and, and the warrants. For a signal were only justified at two o'clock in the morning, Mark, if I'm not, uh, if I'm not mistaken. It was completely unjustified at any other, uh, hours of the day. And not only, uh, can I share my experience, uh. As, as the Chair of the. Relocation Committee, but I also go through that. Intersection of that, that street at that location. On multiple occasions, every week, if not every day, and, uh, I'm familiar with it and, uh. I am not aware of any major, uh, uh, traffic, uh, issues that are occurring at that location. But I, I do believe there, there is this very similar analogy between the Gemini and Lexington and, uh, what is being shown. What is being proposed here and from my experience. I can see why the staff doesn't believe that it's justified. And that's my comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you very much, uh, Commissioner Egan. Any other comments or questions on this item? Or staff? I don't see any, is there any final comment from Mr. Anderson before we look to take action?
Uh, just the only other thing that, uh, comes to mind is the. I don't believe that in the traffic study done, uh, at Hamburg and seventy that it accounts for the. Traffic that will be limited over at Welcome and Granada Avenue. That's now going to be dispersed to other intersections. So I think this is a different. I, I see the similarity in, uh, in. Up to Eagan and this Gemini intersection. Uh, I've been there. I've, I, I see what you're talking about. I think male traffic is a significantly different situation than having. Fifty plus businesses operating during normal business hours compared to heavy nighttime male traffic. So. That combined with the, uh, those other intersections being limited, I think this is a different situation.
Okay, thank you very much. Commissioner Holberg, I saw you popped on screen again. Was that a question or?
No, I mean, I just wanted to assure, uh, Mr. Anderson, I mean, I, I understand. The concern and that the city and the county are both committed to be highly attuned to this intersection. The fact that we have the right of way, the conduit, everything ready to go. I, I think that while it's not satisfying in any way, shape or form. Uh, to the business owners, the unknown, um, I, you know, the city and the county have committed that if there is. A safety issue there, it will be addressed as safety is our number one priority as well.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Holberg. And I think the, the point I would add with that is just in my experience being on the board for the last eight years is. When you have two willing partners, things can move very fast. And, uh, a lot of our challenges when it's been some of these issues have been when a city and the county or the, the county and the state. Are not on the same page and sometimes that's because they disagree with the, um, with the math and sometimes it's because they don't have the, the financial resources. But I guess from what I've understood, uh, both the Dakota County and the City of Lakeville are on the same page. Both, um, if the, if the need occurs, it's not going to be a, a matter of how it's gonna get paid for. Um, or, uh, isn't really a need. I think that my experience with both Lakeville and Dakota County. With so many projects in the last couple of years there is, uh, they don't mess around and if they, something comes up, they're going to. Uh, do something on that. So I do appreciate you taking your time and I want to just share with you that this board. Uh, does want to appreciate all of, uh, your organization and the businesses for, for doing this. We're very confident you're not going away and either are we, so, uh, uh, that we work together and we can continue the conversation and. And that's the way it's supposed to be. So, uh, we really appreciate all that you took your time out of your day to do this and the meetings thus far and. We definitely need to continue the conversation as it may be. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and with that, we do have a resolution before us. Uh, what is the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chair, I would move approval.
It's been moved by Commissioner Holberg. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
It has been seconded by Commissioner Egan. Do we have any final discussion on this, uh, motion before us? I'm not seeing any, so with that, could the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yes.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Grolak?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion is carried. Uh, thank you again. And we now will go back to, uh, the regular order of the agenda, which is item ten point one. Under County Administration, uh, that is an update on the monitoring of the coronavirus outbreak and we have a whole slew of staff. Uh, the showings are gonna be about thirty-five to forty-five minutes of conversation and, and PowerPoint, so. Um, we took a little more time on that, uh, previous, uh, agenda item and that is certainly okay, but just to make you aware that. Uh, this one's gonna be one of our lengthier ones. So, uh, with that, we'll start with, uh, Bonnie Rusoff, Director of Public Health. Welcome to the meeting.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Um, I will start out with doing the situational update again and then, uh, look to BJ to. Uh, talk about the EOC and then Gil will be providing, um, the work that has been surrounding. The focus on long-term care and assisted living settings. So, next slide, please. So as of yesterday, here is the snapshot of where things are in Minnesota. Uh, the testing continues to grow. Uh, and we have seen that the number of tests done have been in the range of six to eight thousand a day. So again, um, that's been very intentional and we expect that number to continue to go up. Along with that, um, the number of confirmed cases are, are going up. And I just will make a, an editorial comment here that, you know, with, um, the unfortunate situation and, um. The civic unrest, it's something that we will be watching now after, um, the, the, uh. Crowds and the contacts that have happened to see what. What we see with this pandemic that's going on. Uh, but at this point in time, you can see that there is still a majority of the cases in the metro area. And our cases in, in Dakota County, um, we're currently at fifty-seven deaths. Uh, the median age is eighty and as I know I've made you aware, um, the majority of these deaths have been in the long-term care assisted living settings. Next slide, please. So here are the Minnesota cases. Uh, there are cases now in eighty-five of the eighty-seven counties, so just two counties in the state that do not have one reported case. Uh, one thing that we also are watching with the cases is how. How the, um, rate doubles and right now, um, a good sign has been that the case doubling rate is over twenty days. So that is something that, um, is important to see as that lengthens. That's, that's a good sign. Uh, however, the thing about that rate is that it is too soon to see if it's a trend, so that's on something that is continuing to be watched closely. So we can, um, see where we're at with, uh, with the status of this outbreak. Next slide. Minnesota deaths, again, we're now, um, have reached, um, over a thousand deaths. And eighty-one percent of those deaths have been in those long-term care assisted living settings within the state. Next slide. And here are the cases again, um, that are reflected and you can see it's varied a little bit, um, through the weekend. One of the things I know that, um, that did happen with, with the protests is that the lab had to close for a few days. So I assume we will see more, um, cases once some of those results have been run. Next slide. Oh, thank you, Nathan. Going, um, back to the Dakota specific cases. Again, you can see here our cases. There's been an increase and just a reminder that we have, um, our dashboard again that has, uh, this information as well as some other slides. Next slide. So the city data, um, that was, um, now has been posted for over a couple of weeks. Uh, again, you can see here on the cases by city. And then next slide. The other way we're reflecting this again is by the prevalence, so that gives us an idea of the burden of the disease and, and looked at. That rates it more, um, considered as far as the population basis. We continue to see that the burden is more in that urban area. Um, and then less in the rural area. We have a few cases in the rural area, but not enough to meet that threshold of ten cases to post information. But, um, again, are, are watching this, um, closely and looking at those trends. Um, knowing that, um, again, with the outbreak that we saw in the long-term care facility. Uh, it made a difference in, in this data, um, in that area of West St. Paul. Next slide, please. A few other updates, um, we continue to have a hotline. Uh, it was a shorter week last week with the holidays, so. We still had calls, but not at the same, um, rate that we had the previous week. We also are doing the case investigations in case contact tracing, as you're aware of. So far, staff have done a hundred and seventy interviews. Uh, and we've trained staff now having a total of thirty-six to be able to cover that responsibility that is, um, a seventy-week responsibility. So. Staff are doing this work on the weekend as well. The essential services, another requirement that we're to provide if an individual is in isolation quarantine. Uh, we continue to get requests. Last week we had twenty-six requests for services. There were sixteen deliveries. And the deliveries would include things such as groceries, medications or personal protective equipment. Next slide. So with that, I am going to, um, pass it to BJ, um, to talk about the EOC and just the work that is being done. In that, um, through that area. So BJ.
Yeah, good, um, morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I, I thought this was just a appropriate time to try and give an overview of how the Emergency Operations Center. Uh, has been expanding as COVID nineteen has progressed throughout the months, uh, the staffing and our, uh. Uh, EOC has adjusted to fit the situation. Uh, if you take a look at the next slide, um, you can get, uh, an overview. This is just our standard, uh, EOC chart. Today we have, uh, nearly a hundred and fifty staff who are helping support, uh, the Emergency Operations Center. We've got everybody from, uh, a liaison for County of Operations Plan. A city liaison, so we're working closely, uh, with those partners. And you can see that the biggest, uh, the biggest group here is certainly the operations section. And that's reflected in, you know, the, the high number of staff in public health that are, are working on the response to this particular situation. But we also have fourteen people in logistics and a, a lot of that is around our, uh, personal protective equipment and distribution of that. Uh, outwardly and donations, management process that has been, uh, in place with both cloth, cloth face coverings as well as. Uh, materials that we've received from the State Emergency Operations Center and dis- distributing those out to our. Primarily our, our city partners, but also to, uh, uh. Long-term care facilities, including some of our group foster care providers and, and those types of organizations as well. So that's. That's been a, a pretty, pretty large group. Um, on the next slide. You can see, uh, the breakdown again, our, our operations section chief, given the nature of the emergency, uh, has been. A public health, uh, position, since that's the, the primary emergency, but we also have. Emergency management, again, ESFs, uh, more, more lingo, but emergency support functions. So, uh, in the case of emergency management, it's basically our, our staff in emergency management who are supporting that. And then public health being, uh, the largest, uh, the largest group with twenty-nine members and overall support and I think. The, the next three boxes for contact, investigation and, uh, tracking. Essential services and the hotline support give you an estimate of how many people are actually required to support those services. And then the, the last group, our mass care, emergency support function, that's essentially our social services area that's. Uh, being coordinated by Evan Henspeter and, um, that will be the topic of. The, the next few slides to give you, uh, uh, more detail on what some of those activities have been here over the last couple of weeks. So with that, I'll, uh, I'll turn it over to Gil.
Morning, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Gil Lasavado. I'm the Deputy Director at Social Services. Uh, and thank you for the invitation today to give a presentation on the work that we're doing. In partnership with Public Health and the Minnesota Department of Health around the long-term care outreach. The work that we're doing is really doing a, a, um, outreach based on the Governor's Five Point. Plan to a- address the concerns of the outbreak in, uh, long-term care, which he classifies or we classify. The long-term care as nursing homes and assisted living. And the Five Point Plan basically is expanding the testing of the residents and workers at the site, providing testing support. And troubleshooting at the, uh, various, uh, homes, getting facility needed, uh, personal protective equipment. And ensure adequate staffing is maintained and then finally leveraging the. and ensure adequate staffing is maintained, and then finally leveraging the partnership with partners, which includes local public health and other community partners as well. We are, the resource that we're doing, the outreach that we are doing is a toolkit that was developed by the Minnesota Department of Health. We've trained a number of our staff on how to connect with various sites and share with them the toolkit that MDH has put together, a number of other resources available, just checking in to see how they're doing and what we, the county, can provide as support, but also have them complete a survey called the RED CAP. And this RED CAP survey goes into a little bit more detail of their needs. And that survey then goes to the State Emergency Operations Center, where they prioritize which site needs to have the testing set up. We are also attending weekly meetings with the Minnesota Department of Health and staying constant contact with Public Health to make sure that we're communicating more broadly. And once a site is identified, the Minnesota Department of Health will provide a case manager to assist that facility administration on the work that needs to be done moving forward. Next slide, please. So I just wanted to highlight, although the Five Point Plan that the Governor has put in place addresses nursing home and assisted living, I wanted to to share with you Commissioners the total number of our congregate settings here in Dakota County. And the work that we're doing in social services with our case managers and our initial assessors and reassessors and our intake staff, we have started to see a number of positive cases in other congregate settings, ranging from corporate foster care, adult foster care, all the way down to board and lodging. But the initial work that we wanted to do as far as setting the priority based on what the task was set before us was to address the nursing homes. And so we started with the ten nursing homes and have moved into the assisted living as well. But I just wanted to give the full picture of what what we're working with and what we're looking at. And I can talk a little bit more about that here in a second. Next slide, please. So our outreach process to date, we first started with identifying staff within social services who we would be able to educate, train, get them a better understanding of what the task and what the work needed to be done. Started with three staff in our initial assessment and reassessment and intake staff. And the work that they're doing as far as intake and assessment and reassessment continues. They're still doing that. This is on top of the work that they're currently doing. And we went into partnership with Public Health and MDH and became very familiar with the tools that needed to to use. And so we started the outreach with the nursing homes first. And then we, once we've completed the nursing homes, we made contact with all ten nursing homes. Eight of the ten completed the surveys and had the conversation with us. Two of the ten have not. And the rationale behind that is that MDH was already in place, had a case manager in place, working with them. So we've contacted them a couple of times, but they were so busy with the outbreak that we decided not to follow up with them at this point. There will be a follow-up that we'll do in about a week with all of the nursing homes just to check in again to make sure that they have everything that they needed. We have trained ten staff within social services now. And we're now looking at training some additional staff to assist us with the foster care providers and the other congregate settings. Those are our licensers, foster care licensers. And I just wanted me to note that although we're saying that we are training them, it's really training them with the tools that MDH is providing. They have already started reaching out to the various foster care sites and the providers. And so the licensers have been very active and are very familiar with this team that's out there right now. So once we completed the ten nursing homes, we then reassign staff to assisted living. So now we have seventy-six assisted living assigned, and we're looking at assigning additional assisted living this week. We were ready to start doing the foster care and other congregate settings this week, but we had to put that on temporary hold because DHS, Department of Human Services, released guidance as well recently on tools they would like to have and information they needed. And we wanted to make sure that we're not overwhelming the sites with two surveys that might be either duplicative or they conflict with each other. So we're seeking additional guidance from DHS and MDH before we start the outreach to the others. One keynote here is that the priority coming from the Governor and MDH is that nursing homes and assisted living have the priority for testing. And so even if we have the sites, the other sites, complete the RED CAP, and it gets to the State Emergency Operations Center, they will go at a lower priority unless there is a large outbreak. Then the S E L C will make a decision at that point. Next slide, please. So some of the lessons learned that we've discovered so far is that as we contact the nursing homes, there's there's more sophistication around their planning and support from their corporate office. So it's not uncommon when we reach out to them that they tell us that they do not want support in testing, that they will coordinate the testing through their central office and/or a lab or a health system that they're associated with. The other thing that we're noticing is that the nursing homes are continuing a no-in-person policy, visiting policy. In some cases, assisted living has loosened that up. But we're seeing on the most part that there's still no in-person visits coming in. We're working through staff change challenges also, where the State Operations Center is working on staffing with the various sites. As they test a full site, they may find staff that are not showing any signs of COVID. They may be asymptomatic at this moment and may need to self-isolate at that point, where the S E L C will then work with the various nursing homes and assisted living to get staffing to assist them. We did see in a couple of our sites here in Dakota County where the S E L C has directed VA nurses to come in and assist with additional staffing of those particular nursing homes. One of the other things that we're noticing is that there is a really huge impact on physical and mental health issues with residents. The longer they stay isolated and don't get a chance to exercise, walk around, they're starting to see other effects of being isolated. And one of the things is that they're unable to, where they would normally do their activities of daily living, like going to the restroom or self-feeding, they're starting to see signs that they're weakening because they don't have the exercise or the strength to do that. We are also starting to see that the administrations of these various sites are saying that there is a mental health component to this of isolation, not talking to their or seeing their loved ones. And we're also starting to see or hear that staff at the various sites are starting to show signs of some mental health issues around the concern that in, as an example, in memory care units or dementia units where residents are not compliant with wearing the facial mask or staying in isolation, and staff are starting to get concerned with the non-compliance there and the stress that that's creating for them as well. We did notice that a number of the sites are using the Dakota County resources for mental health, and we continue to remain involved in following up with them. If they have any questions, then we can connect them to any mental health resources as well. Next slide, please. So some of the future needs and opportunities in talking to our director, Evan Henspeter, it'll be, you know, I just started thinking about how can we be more proactive and more active as a county? I know that the state is, through the State Emergency Operations Center, is leading a lot of the work around the long-term care initiative here. But if there was an opportunity where we would be able to assist, this is where we started the conversation. And our role as liaisons and doing the outreach is very limited. All we can do is make the contact, connect them to resources, and then see, follow up and see if there's anything else that we can do. Long-term care sites, I feel, need additional support. And so a way to do that is potentially seeing if the county would be able to develop its own testing, training, and community resources. It would be rapid testing of the sites within Dakota County. This would, this could be managed through a communication or an outreach to a local health system that may have staff available through either furloughs or other services that may have been discontinued due to COVID- nineteen and see if they are available to do testing. MDH will do all the the training, just like what they did with the National Guard of individuals. And once they get the testing training done, we make sure that they have the proper PPE and equipment they need to go to the various sites. Then training, which would be just-in-time training on personal protective equipment and infection control. This is huge. This piece, you can test all day long, but if you don't have good systems in place on infection control and how to properly put on and take off protective equipment, you're going to be contaminating and spreading the contamination across the board. And then navigating community resources, mental health resources, partnering with existing mental health resources we have in Dakota County, or even continuing to contract with other resources as well. CARES Act funding could possibly be used with this, I would imagine. I just wanted to put that out there to address these needs. And this would all require a really well-thought-out developing a communication plan so that we're working with the state and working with our local partners and ensuring the public is well-aware of what what we're doing to remedy this concern of the outbreak in long-term care. Next slide, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Just Commissioner Gaylord.
Commissioner Gaylord, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Gaylord.
Thank you. Thank you, Gilbert. I appreciate the update on dealing with our nursing homes and other care facilities where we've seen such a high incidence of COVID- nineteen. And appreciate all of the efforts of you and the others in public health to do this outreach and try to get a handle on what's going on here and seeing what we can do to help. I do like the idea that you're floating about trying to offer some Dakota County-based testing capabilities and not only in long-term care, but also, you know, in areas that we're seeing of the county that have high COVID incidence rates. I think that would be something that would add value to the county response to COVID- nineteen and recognize that that is not an easy task. But I think that going forward, it's something we should take a look at.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gaylord, thank you very much. I appreciate the comments. I think that if planned properly, the five hundred and forty sites would probably be the start. But we do have other areas such as CDA, senior affordable housing buildings, waiver-provided support apartments, Salvation Army, and a number of other places in the Governor's priority of long-term care, homelessness, and group homes. I feel that we would be able to address that in the county if done correctly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Chair, just to follow up, not only just facilities, but where we're seeing high incidences, if it's in Burnsville or West St. Paul, you know, to offer some sort of a testing event or something like the National Guard did in those areas to try to see if we can find those people that may be asymptomatic who are carrying this virus around that area.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Gaylord. At this point, I think we're actually gonna stop for any questions that any of the board may have on this part of the COVID update before we get to operational. So I'll open it up if there are any Commissioners who have any questions or comments that they'd like to make on the first part. And I'm, oh, Commissioner Holberg.
Well, yes, I'm just trying to maybe follow up a little more with what Commissioner Gaylord. I mean, I think that I would like to explore this. I don't know what the next step is and if we need, you know, at least four Commissioners to weigh in on, you know, to move forward with exploring what some of the options could be. I guess I'd like a little direction both ways in that if we provide some feedback on this idea and then how, what the next step might be.
Matt?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I mean, Commissioner Holberg, you know, I asked Gil in the discussion of potential outreach to the long-term care facilities to mention that it would be a potential use for CARES dollars if we get them. Because, you know, we are at the staff level right now. We're trying to stay ahead of the game there to develop a set of options for ways that we could put those dollars to good use, assuming that we do eventually receive them. So we wanted to flag that issue. And so one thing that as a board you can expect is pretty quickly, as soon as we actually receive some CARES Act money, we would bring the policy discussion of the board about where are your priorities for how we would deploy those. I hear another question, though, which is going beyond the long-term care facilities. What would it look like for the county to support more widespread testing? And I don't know yet that we've really dove deeply into that one. The first piece we wanted to look at is what could we do to assist in the long-term care facilities? And as Gil said, we're starting to get a handle on that. So I think that, I mean, if we know of interest in this, I think probably the first thing for us to do as a staff would be just to understand what might that look like. And gosh, I did, Bonnie, if you have a comment even about how we would start to think about that question, that might be good to hear from you right now.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I, one of the things that that we saw where there was a good response was when the National Guard did that testing two weekends ago. And my understanding is they plan to repeat that, and we did not have a site in Dakota County that was utilized for that. So at the EOC, we've talked about that and certainly could offer. I think that it sounds like that's something that we should talk and make sure they're aware of, that we would have a site and an armory or several that we could look at because that ended up being very successful in the sense of the number of people that were reached out to. And then in addition, I think what Gil mentioned is that with some of the healthcare systems, there have been, there's been increased capacity in testing and in some of the clinics even drive-through testing. So that is another part of the plan to reach out and do some contacts with the healthcare systems to see if there's an expanded way we can get more testing, we have access to that. So that's part of what I think what Gil was bringing forward. And it may or may not be a funding issue. I think part of this is having, doing that intentional outreach and finding out what the capacity is and how they can help.
Commissioner Gaylord, it looks like you popped up.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Bonnie. I appreciate that. And I think that's part of it is just offering opportunities. And if it means finding an armory that's willing to host an event with the National Guard, that'd be great. Whether it is encouraging some of these drive-through facilities here in Dakota County. And just finding ways to make it easier for people to get tested and to know whether or not they're spreading the virus.
Thank you. I agree. And it's good. We have some options, but certainly can look at. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Bonnie. Well, thank you very much, Bonnie. Uh, Commissioner Holberg, it looks like you popped back up.
Yeah, just real quick, is there any update on serology testing or ability to begin to? I mean, I know there's no, um, definitive answer on if you've had it, what your immunity is moving forward, et cetera. But it seems to me that it, there's at least a belief that you're provided with some immunity if you already have it. How do you see if and when some type of, uh, testing for the antibodies? So that people that think they had it would know if they did. It might, uh, uh, kind of loosen up the opportunities for workforce if people feel a little more, uh, sure that they have at least some immunity to it. Where, where do you see that going?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Holberg, I, you know, the continued emphasis on that has been around using that in, in some of the healthcare settings. So I, I, I think that it's going to continue to be, uh, looked and it expanded. Uh, there's more questions than answers. Unfortunately, right now, when we, um, hear about this, uh, like you're saying, with the levels of immunity. Uh, you know, how assured can you be? But it is something that we are bringing up in our conversations and I know MDH is looking into because of that, along with the specimen testing is certainly the approach and what is being looked at to see how we can get a better handle on, uh, the outbreak as well as opening up the economy. So not a answer saying, yes, we're, we're doing it. I, it still is being looked at and I know being used. But I, there's still is not a hundred percent, um, way as far as using that and, and making sure that it's guaranteed that, you know, you can be sure that you are, um, you have those antibodies. So, um, we'll continue to bring information back because I, it is definitely a hot topic and something that we need to continue to look into.
All right. Thank you. Uh, now it looks like Commissioner Atkins is on.
And thank you, Ms. Chairman. And, uh, Gil, thank you for joining us this morning. We appreciate, uh, appreciate your efforts. I think this is a question either for you or for Bonnie. And that is, uh, quite frankly, I don't find a lot of value in the, and I'm sure you don't either, in the number of positives. That still is just merely a function of how many tests have been, have been administered. Uh, when will the hospitalization rates and death rates by city be released? There is no, um, there doesn't appear to be any privacy, um, related to, um, prohibitions on sharing that, uh, since it can't identify an individual. Uh, or, uh, go beyond what the state laws allow. But, uh, will that be forthcoming? That's a, that's a number that actually is, is more meaningful since it doesn't depend on the number of tests that are, that are administered.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Atkins. Yeah, the hospital, the city level data on hospitalizations and then you're seeing the death data. I think we've been able to provide, um, some of that, uh, through the requests going directly to the Minnesota Department of Health and then they've said, yes, release that. So, uh, I'll, I'll take that back again to see, I, I think the death, uh, data we were able to have, but, uh, the hospitalization data. Um, how that is released or if they, how we can get that provided, I guess, we just have to go back to MDH and we'll do that.
Thanks, Bonnie. And the only other question I had is the, do we have any facilities where we have seen an enormous number of, of deaths slash hospitalizations? Uh, you don't need to explicitly state the name of the facility, but are there any that have experienced, say, 25 or 30 or more deaths?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Atkins, yes, with, um, with at least one of our facilities, we do know that there have been many deaths, uh, associated with that facility. Um, and, you know, it's unfortunate because those long-term care settings, the, um, the elderly are so vulnerable. And I think what we have seen and what has been seen in several other nursing homes throughout the state is that it's been very difficult, uh, to get that under control. And, um, and yet there's hope because I think that's where some of this work and what Gil talked about. It's so important to really, from the get-go, look at infection control policies and other issues that they are doing. Uh, and make sure that's as strong as, as possible to avoid what we've seen in a few of these other, um, other sites.
Thank you. And then just two comments and then I'm done. Well, the first is, uh, I, I'd just like some assurance, either from MDH or from our own public health folks, that in that particular facility and other facilities, that everything that can be done is being done. Um, and I don't believe that I've seen that. I don't believe that we've seen that. Uh, it goes to the points that some of the other commissioners have, have raised. I, I hope and trust that that's being done. Uh, but I'd like to actually see that assurance that there, there is no stone unturned. There is no effort unmade. Uh, second comment I would make is just support for what Commissioner Gaylord and Commissioner Holberg raised earlier. If you're, if you're looking for some head nod or, or, uh, sense of where the board's at. Uh, broader testing to the extent that we can do anything to bring that uh, across Dakota County, particularly the hardest hit areas, uh, I'd love to see it. Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you, members.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Atkins. It looks like Commissioner Workman is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, again, I'd like to also say, thank Gil and Bonnie for the presentation. I appreciate all the information. And if you need a fourth, um, to head nod to, uh, explore the opportunities of more outreach into the communities, especially those that have been hit the hardest. Um, I will, I agree, that is, um, something we should do regard i- if it's at an armory or, or it's something that Dakota County puts together. Uh, I'm all in favor of that. So that's all I had to say. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And thank you very much, Commissioner Workman. Any other comments from board members? Uh, if not, I've got, uh, just two things. One, I think many of you, um, are aware that for 18 years I worked in long-term care. And, uh, it doesn't, uh, make it very easy. And just unfortunately, the, the, the way the setting of long-term care is, is very, um, very susceptible to passing on, uh, COVID-19 and many other, from the common cold to the flu. And, uh, that certainly has been a challenge for many, many years on that. So I certainly appreciate all the work that public health has been doing to work with the long-term care facilities. Cause it's a, a pretty tough, uh, pretty tough gig. But a question that I do have, and I think it's for Bonnie, um, that is, as of today, we are on day 20 of Wisconsin, opening everything wide open. And, uh, for some parts of us, we certainly are well aware that, you know, Dakota County is a border county. It borders, uh, with the, with the river, it borders Prescott and Wisconsin. And, and I'm just curious if we've seen some, any trends that have particularly been on, uh, any of the, either tracing or that, that have been from, uh, or just more of the, where the population is based on the eastern part of the county of some of those cases being more active and about in the communities in Wisconsin.
Well, Mr. Chair, uh, I'm not aware of the, i- i- I, I know the area you're talking about. So we'd have to look at that. I'm not aware of the, um, if there's any current concern in the outbreak on the borders, but we'll, we'll look at that and get back to you. Um, cause it's that I, I hear you and it's a, it's a good point to bring up as far as the differences along the borders on, on all sides of us. Um, as far as what's going on. So knowing that, um, that's a, an area that, that is of interest, we'll look into that.
And I would greatly appreciate that. I think, uh, um, just the reality, given if you've looked at where the community positives have been. It seems like that hasn't had an impact. Uh, however, if you, uh, talk, talk to anybody who happens to live on the Minnesota side, um, the eastern side of Minnesota there. Um, there's a whole lot of people who are ending up spending their, their time over in Wisconsin. So I think that, um, I, I would be very interested to see if there's any trends that were happening there. It is not appearing to be based on the information I've had, which surprises the heck out of me. So, uh, just want to share it with that way. And I would also just add in terms of you, you already have four commissioners who have voices, but I would guess that the full board would be in support of, of, uh, efforts that would be done between you and Gil with, with, with more, uh, increased testing. So I think that you, you have the support of the county board with that.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And it looks like, uh, that might be the public health side of the, uh, uh, conversation. And we can move on to the operational side and with, uh, Gene Erickson, Deputy County Manager. Gene?
Thank you, Chair Slavik Commissioners, and thank you Bonnie and BJ and Gil for the important information, um, that you provided this morning. Um, if we have Nathan, a PowerPoint? All right, next slide. We continue to follow the guiding principles that we've been over a, a number of times. I would just add, you know, BJ presented the org chart for the, um, EOC, COVID-related EOC. On the, um, continuity of operations side, we have, um, meetings of 30 to 40 people twice a week. Um, we're starting a new, an operations team this week and behind that there are 80 staff supporting the continuity of operations efforts in the county. Next slide, please. We've talked about the, um, general guidelines as well. The only point I'd like to make here is that on the last bullet, majority of staff continue to telework. On average, about 60% of the staff are working remotely. 20% are working, um, onsite and about 20% are other, they're on flex or haven't re- there's been no report about them or some, some other, um, case. Next slide, please. We've been in, um, services, appointment services or others for several weeks now. So I thought I'd give you an update on after these first couple of weeks of, um, where we're at. The property taxation and records and service and license center, um, departments in, um, Tom Novak's division. They had 351 appointments in those first two weeks and of the 351, 176 of those were for driver's license. Through June 30th, that 1,302 appointments are scheduled, that's 75% of their capacity. And once again, driver's licenses are, um, the number one service that is, is being requested by appointment. 1,014 driver's license appointments are scheduled. And, um, the library use, um, the library pickup for books has been continuing and that's well received. And the library computer use started yesterday. They're ramping up slowly with appointments, um, and we'll have more data available, um, in the upcoming weeks. Next slide, please. In community services, the by appointment, um, option, by appointment services and community corrections, um, include, uh, under community corrections, probation and critical field visits, among others. And in social services, um, child protection interviews, parent and child visitation, among others. Physical Development Division Campgrounds reopened yesterday. And when I am finished with my presentation, Todd Hoopengartner will, um, talk more about, um, campgrounds. Next slide, please. So what's coming up in the future? The court counters in the Judicial Center are, but planning to open on, um, June 15th. There is coordination with the county attorney, with the sheriff and with facilities to make sure that, um, that is a smooth transition. And at the same time, the Law Library, which is in the JDC, will open two appointments on June 15th. The Northern Service Center Career Lab, previously known as the Workforce Center, will also open on June 15th. CAPR-CABids are proposed to open at the end of June and Todd will address that as well. So I am open to any questions that you might have before I turn it over to Todd Hoopengartner.
Are there any questions for, uh, Gene Erickson at this point? I'm not hearing any, so we'll move it on. Sounds like to Todd next.
Next slide, please.
All right. Thank you. Uh, good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to provide updates on a couple of recent activities involving our facilities and our parks. Uh, as you're aware, on 5/29, uh, two individuals broke out multiple windows in the Western Service Center with a baseball bat and attempted to light multiple fires within those areas. Uh, they were successful in lighting some paper in a printer on fire in a judge's chamber, uh, resulting in some smoke and water damages to a couple of offices, a hallway and, um, a little bit of water damage to our courtrooms. In terms of overall building damage, um, aside from the windows being broken, a little bit of smoke damage in a couple of areas, water damage. Uh, we, the good news there is we're right in the middle of a carpet replacement project for all the courtrooms and the hallways in that area. And so we actually had, uh, concrete down in one courtroom and, um, we were just getting ready to replace some of the other carpeting. So timing wise, that actually wasn't too bad for us. Uh, we did restoration company onsite, uh, within probably five or six hours, removing water, uh, damaged materials and cleaning. We also had an opportunity to use our hydroxylators that we're using for injury or quality concerns at Social Services to address a mild smoke smell, uh, in the space. And we had a glass company out there same day, uh, taking a look at replacement of the glass as well as having FM staff boarding up the broken windows. Uh, as a result of that event though, uh, we took some additional precautions and went and did building exterior inspections of all of our buildings, uh, on Friday. Looking for broken windows, attempted access. Uh, we had no other, uh, uh, issues at other buildings, uh, that day. We also took some steps to reduce the potential for issues at our buildings. Uh, we removed, uh, construction debris and emptied all of the, um, construction bins and waste bins that were adjacent to our buildings to reduce potential for, uh, fire hazards. We also moved all of our, uh, vehicles from the Western Service Center, Northern Service Center parking lots, uh, undercover uh, at Empire for the weekend and they'll be returned on Wednesday. Uh, we're monitoring, uh, we've been monitoring our buildings, uh, Friday through Sunday. Sheriff's Office has had a presence there 24/7. And we have FM staff that have been monitoring, uh, cameras during that time as well. We did have, uh, federal ATF, um, investigators onsite on Saturday and Sunday. Uh, it created a little bit of a challenge for us and that they closed our building to any remediation efforts on Saturday afternoon until, uh, Sunday night about 7:30. And so we weren't able to get back in and start, uh, tearing up sheet rock and carpeting and that sort of stuff until late Sunday night, early Monday morning. Uh, but we are, uh, busy and active working, uh, through that stuff right now. I don't know if Nathan has any of the pictures there he can pop up or not, but, um, uh, we've done a lot of work already in clearing out, uh, cutting out sheet rock and, um, eliminating some of the, uh, uh, carpeting areas in there. So it's, it's moving along pretty quickly. We do expect to have between $50,000 to $100,000 in damage, uh, to facility and contents at that site resulting from, uh, the incident. There's some of the pictures, uh, with the carpeting replaced and about two feet of drywall removed in areas where you had water. Um, in this particular space, it was very much limited to the courts, um, office areas along next year, the building and a couple of courtrooms. Uh, in this case, the county would be responsible for any building damage replacement. The courts responsible for most contents in that area. And I understand from the news yesterday that both men were charged with federal crimes. And I know, uh, Jim, if you were Tom and Kathy can speak to, you know, the charges in more detail or not.
Mr. Chair, Kathy Kena is online and she can address that real quickly.
Mr. Chair and County Commissioners, this is Kathy Kena. And at this time, what we do know is that there are federal charges pending that warrants have been issued for both individuals. Uh, however, those warrants are sealed and so it's unknown at this time exactly what the charges are going to be. Uh, but clearly it'll, it'll be, uh, potentially an arson charge of some nature and, um, potentially a weapons charge. We should know, last time I checked, both individuals were still in the custody in, uh, the Dakota County Jail. On these, being held on the federal warrants and I would expect that they will be picked up sometime today and likely making a court appearance this afternoon.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gaylord. Um, Kathy, just a, just a quick question. Um, why does it become a federal issue? Is it because it's a court or because it's a county building or what makes it federal?
What I believe they will be basing that on is the Interstate Commerce Clause. Um, so if it's, uh, in this situation because, uh, for example, um, one way to make that connection or that nexus is the fact that it's owned by the county and that we receive federal funding for programs that we run out of that building. Um, I'm guessing that, that will probably be the primary nexus they use.
All right. Thank you. Just curious.
All right, uh, Commissioners, um, I'll move on. Uh, some of the parks facilities, just want to give you an update. We did open up the Levon Hills Campground yesterday. Uh, weekends are filling up fast as well as some of the days during the week. We did develop a preparedness plan, uh, that's consistent with MDH's, county, CDC, deed and Minnesota D. plan that's consistent with MDH, County CDC, Deed and Minnesota DNR guidelines. We've limited common spaces to 10 people or less in the spaces we have out there. We've enhanced all of our cleaning protocols for our restrooms and shower facilities at that site. We've actually done modifications to both of them as well to address public health recommendations for each of those locations. Our campground capacity and the spacing of campers will be strictly enforced by staff that are out there. We've done a lot of signage posted regarding social distancing expectations. We've closed the drinking fountains and we do not have a concession or store sales at their location because of the proximity challenges. Staff have all been trained and provided with personal protective equipment to addressing public health concerns while they're working with our visitors to the space out there. And we've outlined in writing for each camper, camper behavior expectations and also posted that on social media. And just as a side note, as of June 1st, we've had about 1,232 cancellations of rental facilities and program registrations for a total of about $165,000 in lost revenue that we typically would have seen through this part of the year. In terms of our Schultz Beach status, so far there are no state guidelines regarding beach operation and we're actually not anticipating there'll be any given kind of where we are during the summer. In terms of Schultz Beach, at this time it's closed and that was done based on three primary risk factors that we evaluated in trying to determine the best approach out there. How close are people to each other based on the setting? How long are people together? And how predictable is the movement of people in the setting? What we know is that most current understanding that beach use is typically a low-risk activity. Nationally, about 50% of beaches are open and about 50% are closed due to COVID concerns. Part of the challenge here is that Schultz Beach is and will likely be a very busy beach if it were open and visitors will need to self-regulate regarding distancing and given enough volume of people at the beach. Even with increased restroom cleaning, these restroom facilities would be very challenging to maintain with the current criteria for cleaning and sanitizing restrooms. We'd also need to add an additional summer temp staff to handle the restroom cleaning, as well as trash recycling, dragging the beach sand, those things. Those small costs, about $7,000 a year to do that if at some point in time we determine to reopen the beach. We also tax a little bit of the park rangers. I know that they're down on staffing as well and they provide coverage at the beach for parking and general patrol in that specific area. And we'd also have to evaluate closure of the interior shower facilities within the restroom building. Although we have a foot wash, we have outside, it would be very challenging to ensure social distancing within the shower facility. We would place COVID-19 related signage in place, which we already have at the different park areas in terms of the outside spacing. And we'd need about five days to prepare the beach amenities for opening if a decision was made at some point in time to open up the beach, as well as posting information on our website and social media posts. And I don't know Nathan, if you have a picture of Schultz Beach, but when we have hot days, it's, it's very, very much packed out there. So right now it is closed. We do have a chain link fence across it, but we do have people still coming and using, putting kayaks in and going out into the water and using the amenities around the beach. And then the last thing we have is the YMCA Day Camp. We have had requests to continue the annual YMCA Day Camp out at the Spring Lake Park Retreat Center. They typically start their program on June 8th, so we're working with them. We typically issue them a special use permit for this purpose. The YMCA has been a key contributor to the Minnesota Department Health Department Development of Guidelines for Youth Program and Camps. They have a very good preparedness plan, policies and procedures in effect to deal with all the challenges of COVID-19 and running a camp and the programs. I know they're running in groups of 10 with a individual oversight for each of those groups and those areas. All of that activities are outside in the camp area out there. Once the governor's order allowed for day camps, the Y moved very quickly to get their preparedness planning in place with a request to begin the camp on June 8th. In terms of other park rental facilities, Dakota Lodge, Shar's Bluff, Camp SAC Retreat Center and so forth, those remain unavailable for booking until a governor's order allows for larger group gatherings beyond the 10 or less people. You know, the picnic shelters, we are having folks just kind of stopping and using them, but we have separated out the locations of the picnic tables to maintain social distancing in those areas. Although we do anticipate the next phase for group gatherings to allow for 20 or less folks in the area. And that's what's kind of outlined in the Minnesota Stay Safe Plan at this point. Due to the complexity of youth program day camps, very specific guidance has been developed by the state for this type of programming. And so the Y has developed their reopening and preparedness plan in compliance with that guidance. And in terms, just in terms of costs and those things, the rental fees from the YMCA camp would be used to offset the park staff temp cost to service the YMCA and the, and the cleaning and garage removal and other needs within the park system. So at this point in time, we're working with them to get them ready to open up on June 8th. And I'd be more than happy to a responder answer any questions you might have regarding these activities.
Does anyone have any comments or questions regarding anything from Todd? And I'll look, thank you Nathan for doing that. It looks like Commissioner Gerlach is unmuted.
Hi, whoops. Are you there?
We can, we can hear you.
All right. I have a question. It was mentioned about the camper cabins, but I didn't get any follow-up detail on that. Camper cabins are usually booked many, many months, even a year in advance. If those are going to be opened up, did all the previous reservations or were those cleared out? Does it start from scratch? And are the reservations beginning to open? Or what's the, what's the plan on the camper cabins?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gerlach, actually right now, we're still developing our plan for reopening the camper cabins. There are some more significant challenges associated with that. We do have the authority to do that on the governor's current direction. But one of the requirements for those type of activities is that we have to leave 24 hours in between reservations for cleaning of the facilities. And because folks are renting them on weekends and during the week and they have been very busy, we have canceled all camper cabin reservations up through, I believe, the end of this month and are not taking any reservations until we can determine the best way to approach this. So we're developing a plan right now. We hope to be able to open this up by the end of the month. The biggest challenge right now is how we deal with this, you know, making sure there's 24 hours in between rentals out of that activity.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Holberg.
Real quickly, is there going to be a need to change the price structure to accommodate additional cleaning costs?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Holberg, in terms of the, the cleaning for the camper cabins in those specific areas, we do all this with temps. And so our costs, I mean, we're actually, we typically have about 18 temps on staff right now. We're running right now with 10 temps at this point in time. So the camper cabins and using temps, we actually make a little bit money per day out there. With the additional cleaning costs, there might be a little bit more expense out there with cleaning materials, but I would expect we'd still at least break even on the camper cabins once we get them opened up.
All right. Thank you.
Others. Commissioner Egan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Todd, there, there has been a strong voice expressed about the closure of Schultz Beach. I do know that the Billsby Lake had to be closed for construction purposes. How does Dakota County compare with the other municipalities in the, in the county and in the metro area with respect to our beach closure?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Egan, we did go out and talk to each of the other kind of metro regional agencies. Give you just a brief rundown. Noka County is not officially open, but they have a target open date this week, but I have not heard yet. I think they were talking about that today, as a matter of fact, with their county board. Carver County has not made a decision to open up yet. Ramsey County beaches are closed until further notice. They do not have an opening date for any of the Ramsey County sites. Three Rivers, which is the largest of all of them out there, is looking at opening on June 5th. They will not be enforcing social distancing at beach locations, is our understanding. And Washington County is scheduled to open June 15th with lifeguards used at some specific times, but they're also looking at kind of the challenges of unguarded beaches as well. And Minnesota DNR is not opening any beaches at this time. So it's kind of a mixed bag in terms of what regional agencies are doing in terms of their beaches at this point.
Well, thank you, Todd. I just wonder if we might be subject to reconsideration at some point then.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Egan, if it's the board's will or interest for us to take a look at opening that beach, we can certainly do that. As I mentioned, I'd need to staff up a little bit. I just need another temp in about five days to prep it, to make that happen. But that's up to the discretion of the county board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments from anyone? And, and I guess my comment, I'll start with just saying thank you to, you know, Todd and all of your staff for trying to figure out the way to be able to open up safely and in consultation with public health. It's certainly not easy to know when the right time to turn the dial is and do this and, and balance the, the costs of safety of our employees, as well as the revenue and, and just comparing where we are amongst other entities and all that. But I, I guess just coming from one commissioner, my take is that when there's a level of, can I keep us in the loop on this? And when there's a level that we can figure out ways to open things safely, we should be doing that. If there's a, if there's a faster way to figure out the camper cabins, today is June 2nd, I would say we should be figuring out how to do that. That being said, if you can't figure it out, I, I think you have the support of the board to, as long as we can stay in communication to be able to do that. But I would guess that if there's a way that we can do things safely as we've done so far with our openings, I, I only will speak for myself, but I would say that we're willing and ready to open things up when we can find a manner to do that safely.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, that's exactly the approach that we've been taking and looking for every opportunity to make all of our activities and facilities available to the public as soon as possible. And thank you for your support.
All right. Thank you very much. And Jean, did you have anyone else that you were going to be introducing?
This is it.
That, that was it. Okay. My, my chair notes had a few others. Then I do want to quickly make a, a point, Jean, on operations and then a question possibly for Tom Novak. And that is, as of last night, there were about 40 available license spots in the, in Dakota County between our two licensed centers and Hastings. By this morning, when I went on just to see what that was, there was a total of 10 for the month of June. And about almost an hour ago, there were zero spots available in the entire month of June. So my question with that is, this is obviously a service that people are expecting it and needing. It's also something that brings in revenue for Dakota County. Are we looking at ways to possibly open up more spots? And how would we do that?
I don't see.
Yeah. Commissioner, Commissioner Slavik, Tom Novak. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Tom. Yes.
Okay. The licensed centers are looking at the possibility if they can shrink down the time element between appointments and things like that to see if we could facilitate more people through the process. We don't have any authority to open up any other offices. We couldn't do that.
Well, I'm going to just kind of push back a little bit on that and the fact that, you know, just yesterday alone, I had nine people call me on licenses, which might be why they filled up. Have we had any consideration on, for example, adding an additional window on the Hastings campus or having weekend hours or later evening hours? Has any of that been considered?
At this time, we haven't done that type of work. We could, we could take a look at it. If, as, as far as expansion of hours, we thought we'd let this play out for a couple of weeks and then see if we could squeeze more people in, in a, in the hour than we're doing today. But we'll take a look at that and get back to the board.
Well, once again, I say just speaking for myself, but I would really appreciate if you did more. So thank you for that, Mr. Novak.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
Any other final comments from board members on this topic? All right. Thank you very much. I know we've taken a lot of time for this conversation, but with that, we'll move on to 10.2, also under county administration and informational item, a consideration of future board meetings and committee meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic. We'll start with County Manager Smith. Who is on mute.
All right. Here I am. Yeah. So as, you know, one, one element of talking about reopening is this question of the board's transition back to more typical meetings, in-person meetings. And we've prepared some information on this to help sort of frame the context. And it has a legal dimension to it. It has a public health dimension and then just sort of a practical logistical aspect to it. And so what we thought we would do would be to ask Tom and Bonnie and Jenny to provide some information about all those dimensions of this. And then as a board, give you a chance to ask questions and discuss and perhaps provide some direction about how you'd like us to proceed in moving back toward this phase of reopening. So with that, I'd like to invite Tom Donnelly, I think, to, to start off with a few of the legal considerations involved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, like Matt said, I'll address the legal parameters for conducting open meetings during this period of time. As you know, the, the open meeting law requires meetings of public bodies to be open to the public. Generally, a meeting is held at a physical location, noted as a regular meeting location, such as the county board room, and open to the public to attend. There's two general exceptions to conducting regular meetings at a physical location open to the public. One exception is a meeting conducted by interactive TV, such as a video conference. Under that exception, generally each location from which a member of the board participates must also be open to the public to attend. So we're not currently operating underneath that provision. And there's some other exceptions to that provision. I'm not going to get into those today. I'm going to focus on the exception that we are currently operating with. And that provision is to allow meetings to be conducted by telephone or other electronic means. This exception applies when the board chair, the county manager or the county attorney determines that an in-person meeting or a meeting conducted by interactive TV at locations open to the public is not practical or prudent because of a health pandemic or an emergency declared under Chapter 12. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak, we have a declared health pandemic and we also have emergency declarations in place by both Governor Walz and by this county board. In determining whether an in-person meeting is not practical or prudent, the county has weighed issues such as the health and safety of the public, county staff and elected officials attending the meetings, along with whether it's feasible to have people present in the regular meeting locations while maintaining appropriate social distancing practices and other recommendations from public health and directives from executive orders by Governor Walz, such as a stay-at-home order. Current, the current executive order limits gatherings to 10 people, 10 people or less. There is an exception under that order for government, governmental meetings. So that restriction does not necessarily apply to county board meetings, but we still need to consider what's practical and prudent. While conducting meetings by electronic means, the county has provided the public the means to also monitor the meetings remotely as required by law. Under this emergency exception, if a commissioner is participating remotely, then the county must provide the means for the public to monitor the meeting remotely also. So today, what we're doing is we're seeking input as to the next steps or phases and how the board and committee meetings will be conducted. The county must be consistent in its approach to these meetings because once you determine that in-person meetings are practical and prudent, with certain participation feasible, in one meeting location, the county should maintain that practice for all of its meetings unless there's some change in the public health circumstances that would require us to go back and look at what's prudent and practical for those meetings. So you cannot choose to be, to gather all together for one meeting and then decide to hold a remote meeting for the next meeting absent some change in circumstance. and then decide to hold a remote meeting for the next meeting absent some change in circumstance. With that kind of general legal background, I'll turn it over to Bonnie to provide some insights as to the public health considerations. Bonnie, still here?
Oh, sorry. Didn't, I thought I was unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. So from the public health side, the considerations to think about again, in the setting would be, can social distancing be incorporated into that for that six feet distance? The other thing focusing on the health and safety of both members and and citizens would be as far as the self-assessment, as we have staff currently doing, thinking about making sure and going through those symptoms as far as anything new that would relate to what we're watching for for COVID-19. And then the additional consideration is around the wearing of masks, the faces, the face coverings. Again, as we are doing in our buildings with staff, it's helping each other and protecting each other. So that would be another consideration as far as having the facial coverings be utilized, coming into the buildings and then during public meetings. So that I think again just emphasizes the things to take into consideration and what would want to be looked at as far as going away from the remote into more in-person gatherings and meetings.
Thank you, Bonnie, Mr. Chair. I think Jenny has just a few other sort of practical logistical considerations to make you aware of. And I think Jenny, you should be up next.
Chair and Commissioners, I will just speak to a couple of the items regarding social distancing and the logistics of doing in-person meetings. The county staff is currently looking into spacing configurations and logistics for different spaces such as the boardroom. Three A at ADC, one ten conference rooms at Northern Service Center. And this includes looking into how many people would be allowed in that meeting space. And just as Bonnie mentioned, face coverings are currently required for staff when they're not at their workspace. And it's also required for those coming into the building for appointments. Another logistic that we would have to look at is the technology availability for these different rooms. The boardroom is not currently equipped to handle any web conferencing such as Zoom, Skype, WebEx. So if we want to do that type of thing, we need to access an outside contractor to help us with that. Some rooms such as three A don't have the live stream that we currently use in the boardroom. So another form of live live stream such as YouTube or Facebook, such as we're using today, would be needed. In rooms other than the boardroom, the graphics that are usually used for board meetings would not be available, such as today. When we're using YouTube, the graphics look a little different. So the look of the meeting that the public will see will look different. Another logistic is access to the building. Currently, access to the building for the public is by appointment only. So depending on if buildings would become open to the public, that would also determine how we would proceed with setting up for in-person meetings.
Thank you, Jenny. And so Commissioners, you know, we wanted to sort of set the table for your discussion and, you know, we
Matt, I can also go through if you want to go to the next slide.
Important, sorry.
The other jurisdictions that we have checked into on the how they are currently doing meetings, three of them are doing in person with the option of video conferences, conferencing. That would be Anoka County, Olmsted County, and Washington. And three counties that are doing virtual are Hennepin, Scott, and St. Louis County. Okay, Matt.
All right. Well, so Commissioners, so with that, I think this is the information that we wanted to provide to give you an opportunity for the board discussion and any direction you want to give to us in preparing for a return.
Well, thank you, Matt and Bonnie and Jenny for for that update on here. And and part of the reason, you know, the conversation we were trying to have is I know I've had a couple of commissioners privately ask me, when are we going to be back to meeting in person? Should it be sooner? Should it be later? And conversation I've had with staff has said just that it should be prepared and the board should be able to figure out when we want to be public as Tom had said, you know, once we make a decision to do that, we we can bounce back and forth. So we have to kind of go at that part in here. And following the open meeting laws, we couldn't really make these decisions like this without having some dialogue amongst the board. My thought on it is I feel like we've been able to have a pretty good board meeting. And I think we're having the appropriate dialogue and discussion. Concerns that that myself and staff have had have been when it comes to our committee, some of our committee meetings, we we don't quite, you don't have the opportunity to look someone in the face and really have a conversation on some of the tougher issues. And we're, as policymakers, not quite living up to our best potential by doing a Zoom meeting. We're doing a lot more of of staff telling us stuff and we ask a couple of questions. But we're not quite getting to be that point of policymakers and and driving the conversation and the appropriate agenda. So that was just kind of some of the conversation was going in here is that probably on a board level, I think we're doing okay. But when it comes to some of these committees, there might be a point at some point that we got to figure out when we want to address some of those those tougher issues. And and number two, when we want to do that in person. So I'd certainly open up some conversation amongst my colleagues if they have strong positions. One way or the other would be great if they're indifferent. That would be helpful as well as we try to figure out. Last point I'll make on there is we're obviously meeting today, June 2nd. As of now, we have committee meetings on the ninth. And then we have a board meeting on the sixteenth. And that's what we have for for Tuesday meetings in the month of June. We also have flexibility with that if we wanted to move our committee meetings, there is ways to move the June 9th meeting to June 23rd. And even potentially if we had to have a have a special meeting on the 30th of June, if we wanted to approve the actions of the committee and just have a consent agenda, no issues, try to get as many of us, try to get four of us that would be able to be there if we wanted to continue to ramp up and make public meetings later in the month. So we have some flexibility with June withstanding, of course, June 2nd today, which we already are here. But would really like a conversation amongst my colleagues to give staff some better direction because they're they're ready to go whatever way we do, we recommend, but they're looking for some direction on what's the right way to do that. So I'll open it up to whoever's wanting to say anything. Professor Atkins bumped on first and then then Professor Gaylord.
Well, and Mr. Chairman, I've got some comments or concerns about it, but I was also curious if we couldn't hear briefly from the sheriff about the status of the jail and let him get back to there's some pressing other issues. And if his, if his update's going to be rather brief, maybe we could suspend this discussion for a few minutes and let him weigh in. Just a question.
Well, certainly. I show twenty-five minutes for the jail update as well. Maybe the sheriff or commander underline, if they can, I know the sheriff, we've been communicating privately and he said that he was gonna kind of tee it up, make a couple of comments and then and then go to let Commander Underline take the remainder of it. But I am certainly comfortable on that part if we want to put one of the two of them on there. So.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, Commander Underlined. Here, yeah, I would appreciate it if we could do that. I'll keep it brief, very high level stuff too. I'm on my way actually after this over to the incident command for the other stuff going on. So if we could do that, that would be great for us.
Perfect. So if there's no objection, we'll, we'll go in and temporarily postpone this this item and move on to the twelve point one on an update on the monitoring and response to coronavirus in the jail. So Sheriff Leslie.
Commissioner, thank you very much. And Commissioner Atkins, thank you as well for the suggestion. Chair Slavic, I wanted first to acknowledge you and your help with getting the curfew in Dakota County signed and in in effect for Friday and Saturday night. It was a game changer for us. Law enforcement is very appreciative of of you doing that. I think it really helped us. And that's what we're after is the ability to meet our goals of public safety for the county and the cities respectively. And you know that the cities, I think three cities have gone now to have to have curfews last night and probably even into the week. I just want everyone to know that we're working collaboratively with the chiefs across the across the county, but that's not what we're here. So I wanted just to tee it up a little bit for Patrick. Commander Underline will brief you on the jail virus and what we found there. He'll give you some data. However, we'll just let you know that since we were, since COVID-19 hit in March, our numbers are such that February 3rd, we are two hundred eighty-two inmates. Our low point was Mark, May 4th at seventy-one. We were at a hundred and thirty-two today. So things are starting to perk percolate back up. We've had roughly six hundred inmates through the jail till we had our first outbreak. And it was a DUI offender arrested by a deputy. He was a point two-two, so he was not able to be to drive, brought into the jail on the fifteenth at twenty-three hundred hours and then tested for COVID on the eighteenth. And that's where I will hand it off to Commander Underline and I will get back to my work. Thank you very much. I appreciate you letting me have this opportunity. Should you have additional questions about riot response, what we've been up to, either send them my way or schedule me for another meeting and I sure will do that for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sheriff, for all your great work. It's so appreciated and we'll let you sign off. And with that, Commander Underline.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, thank you very much. I'll try to keep this very high level so we can keep it going. And then if you have some questions at the end or if you feel I'm missing something, please do ask. Next slide. So a brief overview, as the sheriff stated, we've been watching our population numbers in there. The jail in general, as most of you are aware, has it's a two hundred and sixty-three bed facility with seven housing units. We board all of our females at the Ramsey County Workhouse. So that means they do come into our intake initially and then we transport them up there for extended holding. As you're aware too, you approved twenty-four seven medical coverage effective January 1st of this year. And that has been absolutely instrumental in helping us manage this shift to shift as obviously as we have intakes coming in around the clock. Prior to this, we would have been relying on our correctional staff to make those decisions, determinations of isolation, where we now lean on our nurses. So again, population, you can see what our average daily population in twenty nineteen was. And then just prior to the the COVID pandemic, where we were on May 6th, that was, that was one of our low days as well. And then I also wanted to add some recent dates in there. So I I polled last week prior to protest and then yesterday's. And we also have today's numbers like the sheriff talked about too, to show that there hasn't been a significant impact on our our custody status in the jail. But the interesting note is in May here, we've seen our our population almost double in there. So one of the things we're doing is is reviewing booking data, talking with our peer counties to see why this is happening. Is this unique to us? And we found that Anoka County has seen a similar increase the rest around us, prior to the protests, at least the rest around us were pretty sim, pretty similarly situated in the reduction that they saw after COVID. So we continue to monitor monitor that. COVID tests, again, this is data from yesterday. I have updated numbers this morning. We added two onto that. So at this time, we've tested twenty-two people for COVID. We now have eleven pending tests. So like Bonnie stated, one of the factors with that was the MDH shutdown. So with that shutdown, we worked with our our medical vendor within the jail to identify an alternative testing location, which we've now done. I believe nine tests were sent over yesterday. So we should get that soon. And obviously, this is very impactful to to know that. We don't want these delays in there. You know, a couple of days is okay. We don't want a week delay. Yes, they're in isolation in our jail, but if they do come back positive like this other gentleman did, we we now go back and help with the contact tracing notification to the arresting agencies and then potential quarantine or isolation for our own impacted staff or inmates. So next slide. So high level, again, general response, a lot of this right off the bat was just coming up with our planning team and gesting data. What what is COVID? What's the potential impact? Talking to our internal and external stakeholders, we wanted to get input from the judges, the attorneys, the police chiefs. How does this impact the agencies who are bringing us people? And then we also started talking about our coordinated initial response internally here. We wanted to, we wanted to make sure we were on the same page with COOP, Social Services and the Juvenile Service Center, Employee Relations and the County Attorney to identify any tentacles, as we say, or any roadblocks that we were going to come across. And then we implemented, we implemented very quickly on this. We had over a hundred tasks completed to date. Approximately seventy were done within the first two two weeks. With with that implementation came this employee resource guide. We were pushing out a ton of information, making a lot of changes with the overall goal, obviously, health and safety, safety of our staff and their families, and then also our facility and those housed within it. So we started putting this information into the resource guide. We are working on version two right now. It's approximately thirty-two pages. And really, it's a step-by-step guide on PPE guidelines, proper cleaning and disinfecting to include work areas. Within that facility, we wanted to know who is cleaning what and at what time. This got granular down to door handles, chairs, etc., and included some of our staff, you know, inmate workers who clean, contracted vendors who clean, facilities management. We identified transport procedures. When we were sending our deputies to another facility to pick up one, two, six people, whatever it is, we wanted them to know exactly what to do. What BP are you going to wear? What do you ask when you get there? When you're transporting, how do you manage that down to things like turning your air conditioning to to not recirculate the air within the the cabin, to to bring fresh air in? So we really put a lot of thought into this stuff. One of one of the bigger lifts I wanted to add in there too is something we worked on with Employee Relations and the county attorney's office, and that was mandatory testing or mandatory screening for anybody coming into the facility. So this was implemented with us as well as the Juvenile Service Center. Basically, the same as the the self-check, except for we're doing this with supervisors. We're taking those temperatures prior to anybody coming into the facility and then asking the follow-up questions just to ensure we've been screened. And this also included our contractors too. So this is our medical contractors who actually they manage their own food service, contracted cleaners, anybody coming into the facility. Next slide. And then one of the biggest things we wanted to look at too is is how do we limit the transient contacts? How do we limit all the in and out of our facility? So we looked at who is doing this as far as staff, other partners, stakeholders, programs, volunteers, everybody daily. There are dozens of people coming in and out of the facility. So as far as our staffing went, we looked at modified work schedules as well as work areas. So clearly, we have to have correctional staff within the facility, but anybody who could office elsewhere, we did that. We set up a few pop-up offices and training rooms, conference rooms, work from home schedules as much as we could. And then we started working on some judicial orders. So this was done, there was some stuff in the media presented that, you know, the sheriffs of these jails were simply releasing people and that's simply not the case. As you guys know, this was done after thoughtful thoughtful consideration and discussion with the county attorney's office, community corrections, and then our first judicial district judges. Each and every inmate in the facility was looked at as far as their level of charge, underlying medical conditions, and whether or not they were amenable to alternatives such as electronic home monitoring. And not all were approved. They simply weren't. Some some their sentence ran out and they were released, but not everybody was approved for this stuff. So in the orders, there were two orders. First one on March seventeenth, there was an order suspending our sentence-to-service programming and work release. So these are the gentlemen who come in and out of our facility during the day. They may go out for their jobs or their sentence to service. And then they return at night basically sleeping in our facility. In addition, an in custody courtroom calendar was added. We had one in the morning and then we added an afternoon calendar to facilitate additional bail hearings or modification requests. We extended, we didn't extend, they extended in the judicial order, report dates to the jail. So these are the folks who go and they're sentenced to report to jail, but given a future report date. They're not immediately remanded into our custody. So all of those dates were pushed out initially. And I can tell you, we're working right now with community and corrections and the courts to come up with a plan to start having some people do their jail time. We don't, we don't want this to turn into a stack of people waiting to come in and serve one day, two days, weekends, whatever it is. We want to start working through that as well. And then on March eighteenth was another significant order. This allowed the ability for delegated from the sheriff down through our transport division to quash limited misdemeanor warrants. So this would be a pickup at any county for something. So this would be a pickup at any county for something such as a misdemeanor theft or other. Other warrants not related to order for protection, domestic abuse, no contact order. Harassment restraint restraining orders or anything else domestic related. So basically property or more more petty crimes, I guess. So when somebody would call and say, we have, we have a person in custody on this warrant, will you pick up? We could immediately say, release them and issue them a new court date. So we're still, we're still working on that one. We're continuing with that. Department of Corrections, Excuse me, issued statewide variances for all all jails, including ours. And this happened on March sixteenth. So there was a suspension of programs led by volunteers or contracted staff. So that allowed us to. Our GED programming, our religious programming, our anger management program, we could temporarily suspend that. Stuff, but it did not apply to things that were ran by our staff. And or library or recreational mandates that we must still adhere to and we are. They also allowed suspension of contact and non-contact visiting. We do not offer contact visiting. It is all video visiting. With the exception of professional visiting, those are the only ones that come into the facility. That's your law enforcement attorneys, bail evaluations, chemical health. We suspended all of this and then we came up with some alternative plans for that. So. We would have attorneys use the bail bonds booth or something with a partition in there. We got a Zoom license or using that in there as well as just the general kiosks that we have within the housing units. Next slide. So generally, our intake process and our isolation plan is that any incoming arrestee comes in wearing a surgical mask. We have them. Out in our garage Sally port. So unless they're combative, the arresting agency will immediately put one on them. Our staff will wear either a surgical or N ninety-five mask depending on on what we know about this person, nitrile gloves. And we have now since added goggles and face shield. And we learned this from the exposure that we had in there. This was not. Something that we we needed to do initially. It's not something that we need to do now, but it's in our best interest to do this. So. That is what our staff are wearing each and every time somebody comes in. Then we go through an initial COVID nineteen symptom screening. This was a questionnaire that was developed by Mend, who is our contracted medical provider. It also includes that initial temperature. And then a bunch of questions, just COVID-related questions, same that we would see as far as exposure or symptoms and stuff like that. Booking must still occur, so we we have to wear that PPE throughout the entire booking process. And then we have pre-identified isolation and quarantine area. So if somebody is symptomatic or asymptomatic, but they've answered affirmative to a specific screening. We will immediately place them into an isolation cell for for further monitoring by our medical staff. So with that, it's it's getting filled up, as you can see, just by our testing numbers, which we believe will increase with just with testing capacity across the state. But we have six intake cells dedicated to that. From there, we we had another four and and a short-term housing area. And we can move all the way up through one of our entire units if we need with with twenty-six cells. And then from there, with your approval too, we've obtained an additional emergency housing. Joint Powers Agreement with Carver County. We already had some in place with Good Hughes Scott in Washington. So we've had discussions with them and have a plan in place if we need more of a a mass movement of inmates, isolation, quarantine. If staff become affected, impacted, et cetera. So we have a very robust plan for that. Next slide. So just some of the stuff with within the housing units, as anybody is coming in and it's more of a a long-term stay with. They go through an initial quarantine period of fourteen days. So that's within our classification unit. So everybody in there not only is quarantined, but they have to be classified, which is why we can't just shut down housing units. You can't put. Anybody in any cell. They have to go through this and that's mandated by the Department of Corrections as far as the classification goes. Single cells within the housing units. We were doing great on this until last week. We now do have some inmates who are double bunked, but that means that they've already been out of this quarantine. Period. And we don't believe there to be any issues with COVID there. As we can, we will go back. But as you can see, our population started to increase. So with that, we are. Simply going to have to start double bunking again. Movement within, we we practice social distancing within the housing units as well. Anytime inmates are out of their individual cells, they are to wear masks and staff wear masks as well. Hygiene items, we provided supplemental items to the inmates, including soap. This was, this was a bag of items to include the soap and disinfectant wipes for their personal use. And we also came up with plans just for stuff like how they use. Clippers in in the units, inmate hair care and clipper use. So we're on top of all of that. Disinfected. This is something we wanted very prominently placed and displayed within the units too. And the inmates and the staff were provided instructed when and when and where they should do this. So they're sharing phones, they're sharing kiosks. So we wanted that stuff right next to them to wipe it down before and after use. They've been, they've been very good about this, both staff and our inmates in there. The inmates initially were, or they had a little anxiety too, but we communicated with them. They asked their questions and. Everybody's on the same page right now. Food service, same same idea where anyone preparing or delivering food is wearing a mask and gloves. Food is consumed within the cells. They're not out in their in their day areas, we call them, their general areas within the housing units. So they consume the food in their cells and then the the trays or packaging is is collected. Cell inspections, that is something that will come up in our our exposure as well, but masks and gloves. Worn by staff on conducting cell inspections. And this was something that actually started with requests from an inmate. They kind of looked at their. Their individual cell as their as their house. Say, what are you guys doing to protect me while you're coming into my house? And we, those are the kinds of things we communicated on and. And understood and then implemented some change on. Recreation area. So typically, we have a full-size gym. Used for basketball, other other sporting events in there. All of that's been suspended. So. Right now, they get to use the recreation areas outside of their units. And typically, that's that's pretty limited as far as what they can do, but at least gets them out. Outside into some sun and some fresh air. And then mental health, that was something we we stayed on top of throughout all of this. Again, with that funding approval that came at the beginning of the year, we were able to increase our contracted mental health provider hours. So we still have our. Sheriff's Office Mental Health Coordinator forty hours a week. Then we also have a forty-hour-a-week mental health clinician through Mend and then another four hours with a mental health provider. So. Communication has been great and connection on that has been been very good. Next slide. So the sheriff touched base on this too. Again, background information. And this is kind of paint that picture that this person couldn't be released, at least initially. There are some mandatory bookings and and mandatory hold for courts that present. With some driving while impaired offenses. This was a individual who was a two-two-five PBT. Portable breath test. And then there were passengers in the vehicle to include an eleven-year-old, which also enhances the charge level. All individuals in there were wearing, or the individual was wearing a cloth mask and a scarf, and then all passengers were wearing some sort of mask. I'm not clear on what what they were wearing. Spent approximately four and a half days in the jail. All were in the isolation cell. Except for when needed for movement for court and stuff like that. And another factor that came into this was gentleman's primary language was Karen. So this becomes a challenge or something to work through as this extends contact with an individual as we're using the language line or another third party to communicate with them. Next slide. So upon entry to the jail, again, like I say, we do a COVID nineteen screening. As you can see, a lot of the symptoms that that can present with. COVID individual are on the left. The only symptom that was presented was a dry cough and this was never observed by our correctional staff. Our patrol staff saw this after they had conducted the PBT and thought maybe it was attributed to the the breath being. Exhaled into the PBT. After that, it was not observed by medical staff or correctional staff. Excellent. So Mend is starting to be more proactive with testing capacity and then testing on those who even report symptoms, which is why he was tested. So. Not that he was asymptomatic, but as they were observing him, he would be identified more as asymptomatic. But based upon the information they they asked for a test, he did not want to. He declined a test. It's a consensual test, declined on on the first day. Ultimately, went to court and then consented to the test. So that was on day two of being in custody. We received the results back on day four, which I will say is is very quick. That is. I mean, from what we had seen before, maybe up to a week, within a couple of days is fantastic for us. So. We received them on day four and this was three hours after the individual was released. On the medical side, what they tried to do is follow up with this person to advise them of the test results. And then internally here, we begin our our discussions and communications. Next slide. So and the process with this, and there was a lot that went into this. This was a three-day process that we worked through. We immediately. After we got the results, like I said, it was after hours. I got on the phone initially with with BJ and Risk Management to spoke with Bonnie and Public Health. And we just talked through, what do we need to do now on this? So we did that initial quarantine. For our staff, specific staff based upon their role, what we knew as far as proximity to an individual. So that would be a patrol deputy who is administering. An intoxicizer test, a correctional deputy who is conducting, conducting the intake screening booking process. So we identified a handful of them and then that night we made direct contact with them on the phone. And we wanted to do some anxiety and rumor controls. We wanted to talk with them and then communicate out to our office on what was going on. With our staff, we had to talk to them about how to quarantine. Can you, can you quarantine in a separate bedroom or bathroom? With bathroom, if not, we have alternative housing setup that we can. Help facilitate for them, they're to monitor for symptoms. And then we worked through some of that. Anxiety relief, I guess, with the initial and return to work test, which I'll talk about, you know, a little bit here too. So then what we did that night is we requested our two on-duty supes to do a review of four and a half days of video. This was. This was a tremendous effort from them, very appreciative they did that. So four and a half days of video and then the and then they documented a timeline on this. By the time that person came into our facility, who had contact with them, what was the nature of the contact, what PPE were they wearing and what was the individual wearing? From there, we had some follow-up meetings where we ultimately looped in. Other stakeholders, like I said in the top, Employee Relations and Minnesota Department of Health. I can tell you, the Minnesota Department of Health has a six-person team that's assigned to long-term and correctional. Care settings. They were, they were absolutely, I mean, everybody that was on this as far as our stakeholders or our engagement as well as MDH was. Was absolutely instrumental in helping us navigate through this. So we took that initial timeline that was prepared with MDH and went through. And they helped us identify people that we should further isolate or people that we could, we could reduce. They didn't have to be isolated any any further. There wasn't a need for that. So we did that initially. Just trying to think how we we jump forward and then our final step was on day three. Where we, after vetting the initial two groups, we met with Public Health and Risk Management again. And talked about the remaining contacts that were left in there. These would be our questionable contacts. So for example, we had a cell inspection of the individual where. Two correctional deputies went in. We had to look at that, we had to look at the duration of that, what PPE was worn, what the person was doing. So. Was he facing a wall and not a threat for contamination? Was he standing within a couple of feet and coughing? In their faces. So we worked through that and I can tell you, they were not placed on isolation based upon what we what we found out. We ultimately placed three correctional staff and three patrol staff on isolation procedures. All as of this morning, all have cleared isolation, including their initial and return to work. COVID testing as negative. So everybody is back to work on that. So a big thing for us is obviously navigating through this first one, assess this, learn from it and and adapt to it. Response plan was good, but we're we're getting better. And now we're working with Risk Management and Public Health is helping out with the two. We thought we had a response plan in place, but we quickly recognize this isn't a one set, one size fits all for each department. Especially for us as a twenty-four-seven operation. So we're working on that flow chart. We want to know exactly what what everybody want, what everybody needs to do throughout this process as it comes up with the supervisors. Or even the staff members on what to expect. Like I said, there's a lot of anxiety. That goes with this and we don't want them worrying about where do I go to get a test? How do I get my results? Who do I call? All that's going to be drafted for them. Again, the MDH review, just on a note, that's where we learned of the goggles. We've now shifted some of our our protocol for wearing goggles upon intake, even for mouth checks. That is where one individual was isolated just due to a very quick close proximity to the individual's mouth. And then testing, testing is the final thing I'll hit on and we'll open for questions, but. In talking with the MDH and Bonnie likely no more on this subject, but we. We learned some information as far as, you know, the potential for testing asymptomatic. Individuals and when that is recommended. They also do what's called a point prevalence survey where. They could come into a jail facility like ours and it would, it would simply be a snapshot in time, but they could test. Each and every inmate and each and every staff member within the facility. The problem with that is the information is stale after day one, excuse me, day one, as things change. Within the facility, you could have somebody that was asymptomatic today and they may be showing symptoms tomorrow. So it's something that's on our radar for consideration. We just have not. We have not approached them to do that yet. And then finally with Mend, just on capacity to test as that's increasing, we were working with them to. To help work through that. They're in approximately thirty-seven other jail facilities. So they have a good grasp on what everybody else is doing, finger on the pulse with that. So we're talking, could we potentially test every inmate coming in? Could we potentially? Just test those leaving quarantine, et cetera. So. Again, like I said, we're we're learning a lot. I think we have a good grasp on it now. I I think all the pieces were in place with with the group that we worked with on this process and. Fortunately, everybody came back to work here negative. That's it.
Well, thank you very much Commander for that. I don't know if there's any commissioners who have any questions for the jail update. I can't always.
Commissioner Gaylord.
Thank you. Um, just a question, not exactly related to this, but. Jail population dropped in in May. It's starting to come up a little bit now. Are we likely to see any overflow from Hennepin or Ramsey County as they have this large uptick in in arrests recently? Will some of those people? Get jailed in Dakota County?
We don't, I would say we don't know that. It is unlikely though. Hennepin right now has capacity for. I don't know, I don't know what their daily count is after the protest. They they did have pre-protest capacity for about. Four hundred additional inmates in there. Like them are, are overall population went way down. So Hennepin and Ramsey were also. Way down as you see by the number of arrests that are being made over there. They're not filling that. Capacity up where it could potentially come up as a temporary booking or holding and and to the to the. If they affect, say, a mass arrest of two hundred people. Their intake facility simply could not handle two hundred people at a time. So some could be diverted. To our facility to assist withholding or processing initially. And then we would move them up. We do have capacity to take in, but we certainly want to. Ensure that we are sticking to our response plan here too. So if Hennepin ultimately has to. Double bunk and I'm not saying they're not, I don't, I don't know what they're doing for sure, then that's, we're going to have to move them up there. We need to make sure we're safeguarding our staff and facility.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I thought I saw Commissioner Egan pop on. Is that correct?
Yeah, I did, Mr. Chair, but Commissioner Gaylord asked my my question. Thank you.
All right. As are any other commissioners who have a question regarding this topic? If not, thank you very much Commander Enderline. I appreciate the update on this and. We'll move back to our topic that we were discussing, which was the. Consideration of future board meeting and committee meetings. And I, I think Commissioner Gaylord, you had a. We'll go to there. I think you have the question or comment.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um. Let me see, I gotta go back now. Part of the reason we're doing this is as a result of emergency declarations, and this might be a question for Tom. Those emergency declarations are ongoing or is there an end date to those that we know of? If Tom Donnelly is available.
Yeah, the. The county's declaration for COVID is ongoing until the board acts to end that one. The. Governor's declaration, I believe his most recent one expires on June twelfth and he has to extend it.
Okay. And then the other question is, well, it's not really a question, maybe it's just an observation. We're doing this. Because of our concern for COVID nineteen. And from all indications, it has not peaked yet. So I guess I'm a little hesitant to to jump into in-person meetings, although I would love to have them again. Until after we've seen the peak. That's just my observation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Gaylord. It looks like Commissioner Gerlach, did you just pop on?
Uh, yes, I I've got a, I guess you want to facilitate some discussion about our return to meetings. And it sounded to me, my my initial thought, when Jenny was outlining the logistical. Things that were going to be required. Is it, are we going to, are we going to jump through a hundred hoops, technology, financial? And remodeling or whatever is going to be required to to do all of that? And remodeling or whatever is going to be required to, to do all of that. And, and then. Is this, is it going to be unnecessary in, in a matter of a month or two? And does it make sense for us to? Continue to do what we're doing for, for a little longer. And, and maybe try to avoid all of that additional dislocation on top of everything else. I guess I got a few thoughts about. You know, whether or not we are able to. I guess look someone in the eye or, or facilitate some discussion. And, and maybe part of that is on us for, as we get used to this whole thing. I mean, this is not something that when we first started. I think we were just on audio for the first meeting or two, or at least I know I was. And, and we're getting more and more adept at this. Does it make sense for us to? To continue to do, do it this way and maybe. Just step up and tackle some of those more difficult topics in this medium. And then put off some of these expenses and hoops when I guess our staff has probably got enough to. To worry about with everything else going on. So those are just a couple of my thoughts that I would throw out there. For at least through the month of June.
Thank you. Commissioner Egan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I really do believe that Commissioner Gaylord addressed the threshold issue and that is. Have we reached the, the peak yet? I, I agree with her that I don't believe that we have. Now, what, what I would like us to be able to do is, is to return to our normal meeting. Schedule as, as quickly as possible, but, but I, so that we're not subject to criticism. I, I would hate to have us. Be perhaps the last metro county to continue to meet remotely without having a plan for returning to our normal meeting schedule. I don't want to subject us to that, that kind of criticism. But having said that, I think we have to do this very safely. Another thing is, I'm, I'm concerned from what I have seen so far about the cost of technology. To be able to return to some form of normality. I, I don't want to see the, the cost, the incredible cost that we might have to. Meet. Due to the technology requirements to be excessive. And then finally. It, it relates to what we're talking about, but and I think even Tom Donnelly pointed this out, you can't. You can't proceed to having a normal meeting and then return back to virtual meetings. Once you make the decision, you're. You are going to return to normal meetings, you can't reverse that. That's why I believe we have to make sure that we are absolutely. Certain that, that we are prepared to meet in a, in a regular fashion again before we do it.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Egan and Commissioner Holberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I would just pulled up the stay safe Minnesota grid that the. Governor has and we, you know, we're still in gatherings of ten or less. And at phase three, it's gatherings of twenty or less. And I listened carefully to. The kind of guidelines that Bonnie laid forth. And I think another factor is duration. How long you're all together? As being one of the considerations and. We're, well, certainly we try and move along as efficiently as possible. It's not unusual for us to be. Together for a long time on a meeting day as well. And. Even if we could get the board together with the clerk and the attorney. Then how do you facilitate presentations by staff and given Jenny's presentation? It doesn't seem like even to go to a bigger room than we don't have the right. Technology in place. So while I recognize that we're not so good at interacting, maybe we have to get better. But I don't, I don't think the time is now and related to our schedule for June. I think it makes a lot more sense to maybe slide some of our meetings back. We're expecting that there'll be some kind of legislative session around June twelfth. So if we push meetings back. We'll have more information regarding. What the legislature does, if there's a bonding bill, what. What we're going to have to do budget wise in order to facilitate what we know we have to do this summer, which is the. Damn project. So I'm in no big hurry to try and put us all in one big room, given the current recommendations. And where we are in the pandemic. And I think, in addition, I think that. We should slide some of this stuff off a bit till we have more information.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Holberg. And, and I would say that, you know, so many different, and I'll get to Commissioner Gaylord, but many different. Cities that are still continuing to do this way are doing the YouTube. This is our very first time we've done YouTube. And it isn't, I would say that we're kind of unique in this that pretty much on even the YouTube function. Every single elected official has their camera on so that we're able to see each other and, and look at that. And, and I find that even this dialogue we're having, having our cameras does actually make a difference on here. So. I know that doesn't work for everybody, especially some of us are at home sharing the same bandwidth with all of our, our family members still. And that makes it difficult. So I don't want to dismiss that, but I will say that I really appreciate seeing faces as we're having this conversation. On that. So with that, I will go to, back to Commissioner Gaylord and then to Commissioner Workman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And for those that have bandwidth issues, upgrade your service. That's. Simple. I think for planning purposes for staff, I don't, I don't see us. Making any big changes in June. I think we're at least into July when we know more and, and see what happens. So just. I share that. Thank you.
Commissioner Workman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'm one of those people who wants to get back to face to face meetings because I, I just do. I'm ready for it. But after listening to all of you speak. I can wait a little bit longer, not much longer, but I can wait a little bit longer. And Commissioner Gerlock's point. I hadn't thought of it, you know, the cost involved of setting all this up. And if it's only for a month or so, you know, really we're into covid over thirty million dollars as it is. You know, this is one way we can control our costs, you know, by not, by continuing to meet this way, but. I, I have to tell you though, I am ready for face to face meeting. I am kind of done with meeting this way. It's very efficient. My gasoline bill on my Jeep has been the lowest it's ever been. But I am one of those who is very anxious to start getting back to face to face meetings, but I will. Be patient, which isn't a huge virtue of mine, but I will work on it. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I see Commissioner Atkins popping up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be very brief, but I got a little different spin on it. I've got a question for Matt. And that is. The sort of, the quality of the decisions, the quantity, the types of decisions that are no longer finding their way to the board. Under a state of emergency and it, that concerns me. No offense, we, we've got great, great staff, but you are not directly accountable on a ballot. To voters. And so the, the longer we stay away from having decisions. Made by board members, the more concerned I get. And I think that the big ones are still coming to the board and I appreciate that. My, I guess I just ask for your observations on, on what you're bringing to the board. What's, what rises to that, to that level at this point? And how do we avoid the situation where we've got the? Staff making more decisions perhaps than they, than they ought to be when they don't stand for election on the ballot.
Welcome, Mr. Atkins. Others, the general approach that we've been trying to take in making decisions is to. You know, operate with public health considerations and. I mean, you know, I, I always talk about the trifecta, right? You know, three big things in all decisions that, that we're trying to make, which is a public service first. To, you know, keep. Everybody safe and. And, and, you know, try to, try to balance those within the situations that we see. As you know, we've had to make some pretty quick decisions with short. Timelines about particular facilities. The, the approach that we have tried to take and I, I think for the most part, we have taken it. But I'm going to acknowledge that sometimes in the pace of decision making, we've gotten out of sequence. Is to do what we tried to do today and other weeks is to say, this is what's coming in terms of reopening plans or not. Reopening, let the board know about that, explain the rationale. Answer any questions, you know, take feedback. I think we've done that today about, you know, came with an idea about supporting long term. Care facilities. You affirmed that and now you've also sent us in a direction of let's work on broader testing strategies. And then having presented that, go ahead and run the play. You know, obviously nobody on the board and. Nor do I ever want to know about a facility closure by seeing it in a press release. That should not happen. So I think, I hope that's responsive to the question. I think that, you know, we're trying to be mindful of anything big. There's some really big things that. You know, we are sort of delaying. You know, part of this discussion, I think was about. Clearly board policy discussions. We're used to having best happen in person, you know, trying to figure out how do we allow you to have those. I hope, I hope that's helpful. I don't, I don't, I don't believe that we're operating any, any differently in terms of an understanding of. Administrative authority. Under the emergency order, except that everything by nature of circumstances just had to happen much faster.
Mr. Chair and Matt, I, that is exactly what I was hoping to hear. And I think with, with extra. And it's for the most part, it's what we've seen. It's a credit to you, it's a credit to our staff, but there's a demand when there is extra power under an emergency. For extra communicativeness, if that's a word, extra communication, extra transparency. Because we are. I know all of us are getting more questions, concerns than we've ever gotten before. And the last thing we want to say is, is I don't know. And then find out that a decision, no matter how small it may seem. What, you know, libraries opening to computer use. That the last thing I want to do is say, I don't know what the answer is. And then find out an hour later, that in fact, it's already occurring. So it's, you know, that sort of thing. And I think that's, that's certainly what, what you and your team are endeavoring to do. And like everybody said, I also look forward to getting back together in person, but I recognize the circumstances at all. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Atkins. Does anyone else have some comments before I summarize some of this and tell me if I'm right or wrong? Okay, what I am hearing is that. We don't want to go in and take the lead on this, particularly if. The pandemic and, and the testing and all the, we don't have enough information to be able to jump in like some of the other counties have and go back to in person. In the month of June, more than likely the month of June on here. So that point's been made and I think that that's been uniformly agreed upon. The system that we are doing is working, albeit not perfect. It is still working. So to continue with that process, that's first point. Because we have not seen a peak yet, even though some data is getting, seems like we're getting closer on parts of that. Second point has been a conversation of how staff brings up some of those heavier issues that we haven't discussed this. So that we as policymakers can do a better job. The third point, which I don't know, there's been much discussion. I had shared some of that as well as Commissioner Holberg had that has said, you know. We've got a whole bunch of dates in June and we could move things around based on that with, whether that be the legislative session or. You know, that part in there, I don't know if other people have the other later Tuesdays available in June. But right now, the last two Tuesdays in June, twenty third and thirtieth, we're not scheduled. So we have some flexibility. If there's some issues that we need to push back a little bit, we, we may be able to do that. So I, I guess that's the only point that. I don't know if we gave any clear direction to the staff on. Matt, did you want to start, I guess?
Mr. Chair, if I could just, I think what I'm hearing is we would continue to. Be in the planning and readiness stages for returning to in person board meetings. I'm not hearing an expectation that that happens in June. And we'll continue to monitor. And think through these logistics so that, you know, we're, we're, we're sensitive as you are. To spending a whole lot of money to do something different that might not have to persist. I guess I'm, I'm understanding that we have some additional dates that we can use if need be. I'm, I'm still hearing though that the June ninth scheduled committee meetings. Would proceed. As normal, we can look at, we're still developing the agenda. For that meeting. But I guess that, that's, that's what, what I'm hearing from this conversation. Do you think I have that right?
I do believe you have it right. I, I know one of the things, just knowing it's coming on the, that, that I'll be very point blank on is. The conversations on Elf. I know we have cities that are ready for that conversation. Personally, I'm a little concerned to have that conversation on, on June ninth. I don't know what else is on the agenda, but I know that I've had some of the city administrators reach out to me on conversations on that with. With both saying they'd be able to support a later date in June and also those concerned by that. But I just. I, I know that that, that's an issue that I'm concerned partially with the legislature not figuring out things out yet. But also going to some of this, how well prepared we are to have that larger conversation yet. So that's my only thing. But I know that the plan was to do that in June if I, if I'm aware. I just don't know if June ninth is quite the time to have that particular conversation.
Chair, I can offer this, that one of the other. Package of items that we had, we will want to talk with the board about in later June, after the legislature has a chance to act. Would be some contracts related to the Bills be damn. And so just on that basis, June twenty third. Would be a better date. If, if we do hold the meeting on, on June ninth, we won't really know for sure what the legislature has done. So that might, all things being equal, that might push us, the board to consider moving the, the committee meetings to the twenty third.
Any thoughts from everybody else? Or would you prefer to just? Let staff kind of come with their recommendations and then in the coming days? Commissioner Gaylord?
Here, I just, I, I guess something that Matt just said there at the end, are we talking about? Not having a meeting on the ninth and pushing it to the twenty third? Are we having, are we talking about adding a meeting on the twenty third?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gaylord, what I was just talking about is the potential of moving the meetings from the twenty ninth. So not hold a meeting on the ninth and instead holding those meetings on the twenty third. If that would, that would certainly, in the case of Bills be damn, let us know with that, with a more, with more information.
I think it's, let us know.
That's kind of my opinion. Trust staff on that?
Well, and I also think we also need to get maybe a better feel for the CARES Act funding distribution. Piece of this too. I mean, I, I have for one, I'm not in the mood to spend money that we may not have. And we, in my mind, we are going to have expenses that related to the pandemic that we are going to incur no matter. What we do. And we need to know what the ramifications are. And then of course, again, the cost of the dam, that project's going forward. We're going to have bills to pay for that as well, irregardless if we get bonding money or not. And those are some pretty big ticket items that at least for me are pretty important to have a more clear picture. Before I could feel any level of comfort of making any commitments to more discretionary spending.
And I think that's a great point, Commissioner Holberg. I would also add that. As of early this morning, a quick conversation I had before the board meeting, it does seem like. The CARES Act money seems like it's been bouncing back and forth from a decision of the administration versus a legislative decision. And, and it seems like by the hour, which way people think it's going to go. But I've been hearing as of this morning, that it seems like the legislative. Compromise may actually be. A more realistic than it was a week ago. So, so that's, we'll know more of that potentially. So, so that's, we'll know more of that potentially on a, uh, June 12th date.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Taylor.
Thank you. It sounds like we're moving our June 9th meeting to the 23rd.
Commissioner Egan.
Mr. Chair, that, and I'm going to direct this to, uh, either Matt or Steve Melkey. On an item that does not relate to what we're talking about, but it's the land, the comprehensive land use plan. We've all been approached by the trust for public land. And they wanted to be on the June 9th meeting, uh, scheduled. And Steve, I don't know if, if you were able to do this for them or not. I know they requested it and I know we've been incredibly busy with other, uh, pressing matters. But, um, if we moved it to the 23rd, would it allow them the time that they need to make sure that, uh, that the ballot consideration is given timely? Uh, timely attention.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Steve Melkey, uh, my response would be we have not had a conversation with them yet regarding the 9th or the 23rd. That's something that has not made it to the top of the list yet, but we understand that they have a desire to, uh, come in and, and, uh. Speak to the board relative to the financing plan. That financing plan has not been presented yet, uh, in its, uh, as a presentation to the board. But nonetheless, I think you've received it, um, as a, uh, as an email attachment. So you have it available, but. I have, I, I can certainly arrange for them to be at the 23rd or the 9th. But I think there is some benefit in moving to the 23rd, just simply to get the legislative session behind us, hopefully. Because some of the questions that are coming up do have ramifications on how we fund various projects.
Thank you, Steve. That really helps.
And Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Let me throw a little bit different spin. Uh, and that is June 9th is three days before the, the planned June 12th special session. And it, to me, that argues, uh, why we would, uh, certainly want to consider meeting on June 9th. We will know a lot more at that point. Uh, we have seven groups in addition to our staff, but seven individuals on our board. Who are extraordinarily well-connected, uh, with our legislators. And it seems to me that it would be a prime opportunity on the 9th to talk about where things stand. And where the leverage points might be with our legislators to push them in those last three days. I, and I, you know, I, I don't like having any more meetings than we need to, just like the rest of you. But I don't know that I would, uh, as I sit here today, say, let's not meet on June 9th. When it might, uh, prove to be a, an extraordinary opportunity to talk about where things are at and who we got, uh. Where the, what's the, uh, the nature of things, who we ought to push on. We'll have, uh, information from MICA, uh, chaired by, uh, Chair Gaylord. Uh, we will have all kinds of additional information by them that we don't have right now. So just a different, uh, different perspective.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gaylord?
It sounds like Commissioner Atkins is, is advocating for a GGP meeting on the 9th. Am I right?
That's kind of where I was going, that or a full board meeting, um, on that day.
Sounds more like a GDP legislative update.
Yeah. Commissioners, you did just today on your agenda, scheduled, uh, GGPs through the remainder of the summer, if not the year, to allow for that sort of thing. So there now is a GGP meeting on the calendar as of this morning for the 9th.
Well, here's my suggestion. Unless the board thinks I'm off on there, I think we should go in, um, quite frankly, we, we all kind of expect to do, to, to be working on Tuesdays. And, uh, we up till last week, we did it every single Tuesday, March, April and May, pretty much. And, uh, and we're doing this virtually by, by Zoom. It, we can kind of be anywhere and, and do a meeting. I personally think that we should move the PD and the community service meeting to a new scheduled date on the 23rd. But have, still have a, a, a GGP meeting on the 9th. That would be my recommendation unless people oppose. Got a thumbs up from Gerlock, so. Anyone disagree with that? Okay, I think we have direction on that. Is there any other final comments anyone feels they need to make on this topic? They don't. We sure had a, a, a much longer meeting so far than what I thought we did. We are on item 13.1 is actually going to be a county manager mid-review and we're at noon. What I think I'd like to do is have us go to, we'll finish up with the, um, the agency reports. And then we will, um, adjourn, we will recess this meeting, we'll have some lunch. So people can go and get a bite to eat. And then we'll go to our, uh, GGP and our, um, and our, uh, uh, ma- manager review after. So I think it's appropriate since even though we're at home, we should be able to grab a bite to eat, um, and, and let staff who are staying on do that as well. So my thought is that, well, first of all, we can, uh, uh, take a motion to, uh, do the closed executive session for the county manager mid-review. Sir, motion to that extent?
So.
I think it was moved, moved by Holberg and seconded by.
Gaylord.
Gaylord, thank you. Your voices sounded the same. Um, okay. Uh, no discussion on that item. We'll take a roll call vote for that.
Commissioner Slavik?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaylord?
Yes.
Commissioner Gerlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Atkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Holberg?
Yes.
Commissioner Workman?
Yes.
Commissioner Egan?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much for that. And I do also, before we get into the reports, want to thank all of you for being on the call. And I know it's been a very long, lengthy, uh, meeting, but a lot of good discussion has happened with that. So. Starting with the Association of Minnesota Counties, um, we did not have a board meeting, but we did have a District 10 meeting that Dakota County chaired this year. We, uh, had some, uh, a number of questions and dialogue that went regarding, uh, what we're doing, how we're working through the pandemic, what we're looking at after budgets as well as. Uh, what are some of the innovations we hope to continue? And, uh, piggybacked a little bit on the Blue Ribbon Commission, which I'm serving on every Monday, excuse me, every Wednesday and Friday for a couple hours each day. As we're going basically every county operation and figuring out ways that either, um, through our own counties would be some best practices. Or through legislative at the federal or state level on that. So that's kind of what's been going in there. I did share that in conversations that have been had, which I'm sure, uh, MICA will also share because I've had the conversations with MICA that, uh, it's still. Still determining, uh, what the CARES Act, what the number would be, what the formula, and, uh, will it be legislative or administrative be done? Next, moving on to the broadband board.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair. Yeah, sorry about that. Um, we're meeting later this month. I have nothing new to report.
Great. Thank you. The Legislative Advisory, uh, Work Group, Commissioner Atkins?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. We'll talk in detail about this at our next meeting, but, uh, we already alluded to the fact there's special session coming up June 12th. Uh, and CARES funding like, uh, or Bills be damn and other projects are critical, uh, elements of what we're seeking. So we'll talk about more at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank, thank you so much, Commissioner, uh, Atkins. Moving on to, uh, the Emergency Services Board, Commissioner Egan.
Mr. Chair, we're having a statewide, uh, legislative meeting tomorrow, and we're having an executive committee, committee meeting on June 10th, a week from tomorrow.
Thank you, Commissioner Egan. Commissioner, uh, Minnesota Inter County Association, MICA, Commissioner Gaylord.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, MICA actually meets next week. So, uh, a lot of this will come up at that meeting, but, um, just in general, um, for the board's information. We're following the CARES Act information, most specifically, um, as well as some other issues that are, um, uh, likely to be discussed in, in the special session. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Gaylord. The Metropolitan Mosquito Control Commission, Commissioner Workman.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We had an executive board meeting on May 27th. They wanted to extend their thanks to Dakota County for the payments that they received early. It was, uh, very much appreciated. The, we did some discussion on the budget and the executive director did come back with a zero, uh. Percent levy, um, giving the world today, which means, uh, which is unfortunate. Well, it's not unfortunate, but, uh, the plan was to restore some services in areas that had been cut previously. So part of the savings will be to not restore, uh, those services in those areas. So we'll, you're smiling. Yeah, your area is, is not going to get restored. I'm sorry. Um, but we did talk about the biotene black flies and, um, they were able to, uh, uh, get their, um. Permit amended by the DNR to, to treat, um, those because previously it, I don't know. There, it, there's something strange about this black fly. They weren't able to treat it, but now they can. So you will probably see some treatment, but full service to your area. One, you, you're not the only one, but your district. But, um, that will not happen next year. So I'm sorry.
Thank you. Pretty much areas where your food is grown are the areas that won't receive a lot of their service back.
Okay, rub it in some more. All right.
No, no. Well, thank you very much for all your good work and especially on the, the, the black flying ad issue with that.
My pleasure.
Moving on to the, uh, um, Minnesota Valley Transit Authority, Commissioner Gerlock.
Um, well, I can, uh, tell you, I've been getting some email updates, um, daily, uh, through the different, uh, um, rioting and such in the cities and how that's disrupted transit. Maybe some of you are getting some of the same notices, both from the suburban provider situation and also, um, clearly metro transit. And the last, uh, the update I have here was, uh, yesterday evening about 7:00 PM. And just a few things that I think would be of interest, uh, metro transit and other suburban providers will not be operating Tuesday, June 2nd. That's today. Uh, Metro Transit had to evacuate, uh, Haywood and Nicola garages this past weekend, but were able to get back into Haywood yesterday. Uh, the hope is that, uh, regional bus service will resume Wednesday. MVTA will operate local service only for Tuesday. Trips to Minneapolis and St. Paul will be suspended as well as local service to the Mall of America Transit Station. Uh, Redline service is also suspended on Tuesday. So it's been, um, like many things, kind of a, a, a day by day, uh, monitoring the situation, trying to put service back in place when it's safe to do so. So that's, uh, that's what I know about, uh, going on with the transit.
Thank you very much. And now the National Association of Counties, either Commissioner Gaylord or Atkins?
Ms. Chair, I think everybody's getting, as far as I know, all board members are getting the updates, uh, that are coming out from NACO and being able to allow in on the, uh. Uh, intergovernmental association, uh, discussions if they choose to. So hopefully all have the same information of those, that, uh, those of us that are on NACO, I have as well.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Gaylord, anything further?
Uh, no, not, not at this time. It's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. And the only update, uh, serving on finance and pensions, um, that I'll share with you because it will actually relate to the Community Development Agency, uh, Board. We did have another presentation yesterday on kind of the bond market as we're looking to do our, uh, our single, uh, resident occupancy, uh, housing with financing attached to that. Uh, it's been a pretty, uh, last couple of months have been pretty vulnerable. You've been able to get really good rates and then rates that would just be, um, astronomically high, given the, the market. So it has bounced around, but they've said that in the last week, there has been weeks, tweaks, there has been some stability in the market with that, that you should be kind of coming to. Look to do debt service at the right time with the Community Development Agency.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just, just one other thing, um, uh, to mention that, um. NACO is not going to be holding its, its, um, usual meeting in, uh, the summer, but, um, they are doing some virtual. And any NACO member is invited to participate in what they're calling a membership town hall on July 13th. At, uh, let's see, it's at 4:00 PM Eastern daylight time. Um, and then they will have, uh, the NACO annual business meeting, uh, July 20th. So there will be some virtual meetings that people can participate in if they want to, um, uh, relative to, um, the organization for NACO.
Thank you, Commissioner Gaylord. And, uh, with that, the Vermillion River Waters should join Powers Board did not meet this past week. Uh, as was scheduled, we were able to, uh, move everything, uh, to the June meeting. And then the, uh, Workforce Development Board, Commissioner Gerlock.
Nothing really new to report there. I did have a conversation with Mark Jacobs, uh, a couple of weeks ago about, uh, just preparing at some point to fill the board in on. Um, a little, at least high altitude, where things are at within the county with, uh, employment and, and jobs and such. And then, um, obviously we know all of the answers, but, uh, what, uh, what is the, that's sort of a, a broad game plan for going forward? It's, was we shift from the, uh, public health, uh, into the, uh, economic situation. But then again, we is all intervened from a public safety crisis. So I don't know exactly where, um, where that will fall. Maybe for our board priorities, obviously we're looking at the health and then the public safety and such. But at some point in time, we're going to have to, uh, take a look at the economics and the, the, uh, job market. So, uh, like I said, I just asked them to, uh, be prepared that, uh, the board's going to want to, uh, to have at least some information of where we're, we're going with that at some point this summer. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gerlock. And I would certainly love to see that as well. I know it's been, I think, three or four weeks ago, I asked to see, uh, what Dakota County numbers. We've seen the total number of unemployment, uh, data, but I haven't seen how many individuals start, went back, started and went back to work. So. Looks like every, now we're at the others section. Is there any other updates? Commissioner Holberg?
Yes, thank you. Super brief, the tab meeting, uh, we, we met on, uh, I believe it was the 20th of May. Uh, I think you may recall a couple of months ago, I brought up that we were going to have to redo the transportation policy plan because of a glitch between. Timing between federal and state requirements. So that's been put out for public comment. Uh, certainly a lot of discussion as, uh, Commissioner Gerlock referenced regarding transit and COVID and. What future transit use is going to look like, et cetera. And also there were some concerns expressed about local units of government and their ability to provide local match. Um, if what most people are expecting with constrained budgets, um, moving forward. And also the reduced, uh, revenue collection as a result of less gas and vehicles and all the things that kind of fund. Uh, the transportation system in Minnesota seeing reduced revenues as well.
Thank you, Commissioner Holberg. Commissioner Gaylord?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. All of a sudden, a lot of activity with greater MSP. We're now into, um, at least weekly meetings, um, virtual meetings, but nevertheless, weekly meetings, which is a, a big uptick from, uh, quarterly. And, um. One of the things that, that, that's being discussed is, is some kind of regional coordination for some additional funding that is available from the federal government for economic development. There's, uh, apparently $1.5 billion available divided by regions. Our region gets 225, uh, million, I guess. Unfortunately, we spread that between Ohio, Michigan, Minnesota, Wisconsin, Indiana, and, uh, must be Illinois. Uh, so the trick of it is that you have to have in place a thing called a regional economic framework. And so the, um. Greater MSP is working to, to try to put together, uh, a framework. It needs to be approved by the Metropolitan Council. All this has to be in place so that you can add it as an attachment to a funding application. And I believe all of this has to be done by June 24th. So looking at trying to get in, um, those kinds of things, get that all in place in order to, um. Offer the opportunity for the region to access some of this, um, some of these dollars, which, which is, um, competitive. Uh, before all the other states take up all the money. Couple ideas of where this money might go would be, um, uh, improved skills training, um, or offer, um, a greater broadband. Uh, so something to look forward to, I guess, with that. And then in addition, in the most recent meeting, um, um, greater MSP. Being a, a, a group of businesses and primarily with, with, with the assistance of local, uh, counties. Um, is looking at the implications of, of what's been happening recently in the Twin Cities. Not just, um, trying to help businesses, um, uh, respond to, um, um, some of the. To the looting and to all of those issues, but more importantly, looking at what we can do as a region to improve racial justice and, um. so those will be part of our ongoing discussions about what we can do to make this region fair and more equitable going forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Gaylord. Are there any other reports? If not, we'll move on to the county managers' report?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Commissioners, in the interest of time, I think that I don't have any more information to present today. There are questions, I'd certainly answer them.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Matt? If not, my thought was that we would go in, take a break until 1:00 and do the GGP meeting at 1:00 and then the county manager after that. Is there any objection to that? I don't see anything on there. So then we will move into recess and we will begin the GGP meeting at 1:00 PM. Thank you, everyone.